They will. Okay. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We are ready to begin this morning's special board meeting. The special board meeting of May 21st, 2021 is now called to order. The time is 9:34 a.m. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and the district's mission to be a world-class school system. This morning's agendas includes public comments and one item under recommendations. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Our motion, we adopt the agenda as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. And second, Ms. Morgan, thank you. And I don't believe we're going to be able to record our vote because it looks like we're having technical difficulties. So if we could do it by show of hands, I'd appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six-zero, motion carries.
One more, can you guys please state your name? You're both...
Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Ms. Jenner, we can't have a discussion with the board at this time. This is not the appropriate time for that discussion. As we did last time, board members, if you could please, especially since the screen is not working and they can't see the vote on board docs, if you could please just do a roll call vote, verbal.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Kittens?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Thank you. Six-zero, motion carries. I also wanted to let everybody know too, Ms. Giavanelle will be joining us via phone. Ms. Giavanelle, are you here with us? Ms. Giavanelle? I know she's trying to call in, so she will be coming in on the meeting shortly. The next item on the agenda is public comments. Ms. Dupree Bruno, please address the item of public comments.
Public comments will be after Ms. Jordan. I do see that on the script. Oh, I'm sorry, this is not a briefing, this is an action meeting, my fault. Yes, public comment, I apologize. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operation of the school district. If you completed a blue card, please put it in the basket provided at the back of the room. If you need a blue card, they are located in the hallway outside of the boardroom. The rules concerning public comment are posted at the back. Public comment will be made from the central microphone in the back. Please be advised that the board does not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair, Ms. Jordan, will address concerns or the assignment of any concerns or requests to the superintendent. Board policy 1.181 is in effect and requires everyone to wear a mask when on school board property. I'm sorry, it actually is not in effect at this time. I'm just reading my script, but it is not in effect at this time. But because we are during school hours for protection of our union workers, business hours, we will have masks on except for in the boardroom for the individuals in the back. In addition, for the benefit of other speakers, we ask that you use the supplies if you wish to sanitize the microphone. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. The purpose of public comment is to provide feedback. Personal attacks on individuals or abusive language are prohibited. In addition, clapping, hissing, and booing, unreasonably loud and/or offensive language, swearing, cursing, or a display of temper are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per board policy 1.11 and may be removed from the chambers. There will only be one warning, please govern yourself accordingly. Per board policy 1.11, the time per speaker is three minutes. If there are 20 speakers, and I believe we will have less than 20 speakers at this time, Madam Chair, you will find a countdown on the big screen. If that does not come up on the big screen, then I will give you your time. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will be shut off. We encourage you to address the board as a whole versus individual board members as they act as a collective board. We also encourage you to address the board and not each other. Please state your name prior to making any comment. And at this time, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, we have eight speakers.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who has not filled out a blue card who wishes to do so? No? Have you filled, you wish to? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, Ms. Dupree Bruno, will you proceed, please, with public comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Tara Jenner.
Tara Jenner. Requesting the board actually affirmatively state and go on record sometime during the meeting tonight, stating that you will actually assure us that you will not scrap the nationwide search regardless of how well you may feel any interim superintendent is doing. I would also like to object to the fact that the meeting time this morning makes it impossible for many people in the public to comment and participate in the process, especially with your website down. The placement of the meeting on the calendar on May 14th did not include this particular meeting date and time. It was added after the fact, so people that came to that meeting or were relying upon the information supplied at that meeting may be under the misconception that the only next meeting was the 24th of May. And they don't know necessarily, what some of us know, that we need to go on board docs several times a day to make sure you don't sneak anything in. This violates our rights to be able to make public comment and participate in this process. Knowing that Ms. Giavanelle was going to be out of town today on personal business, even though she may be able to call in, my understanding is unless you waive the policy for a specific exception, she's not going to be able to vote on anything you guys discussed today. And that also is a huge problem when you pick this date as a follow-up. Considering the short notice and the exigency and importance of this, I think you need to make a motion and actually make an exception to that particular rule. On the matrices, you've got grammar, punctuation, et cetera. It looks as though you've got that at the same weight as all the other things. I'm sorry, but if someone has a master's degree, I expect them to have decent grammar and punctuation. At a bare minimum, that should be considered, in my humble opinion, as only a negative if they don't meet those credentials and criteria of being able to be grammatically correct or use punctuation or be able to communicate, not used as a way to up somebody. Next, I think in the rubric items, you need to give specific weight to different items. Education and community involvement should not be weighed at the same level of its experience, budget, and finance and problem-solving initiatives. It would be easily skewed in favor of somebody that you know or somebody that you've had an opportunity to converse with, especially if they've been in the interim position. And I think that needs to be modified so that you maybe multiply by a factor of two or three some of the other elements that are more important and germane to the job of superintendent. Also, transparency is of the utmost importance, and I am going to recommend that you guys agree and acknowledge that background checks on any applicant and disclosures of any of the findings be shared with the public. Exclusion of a candidate should be the norm, except barring exceptional circumstances if they have a history of DUIs, which, by the way, we've had in the past. Felonies, domestic violence charges, allegations of moral perpetuity and other things, or if they have been removed for cause from...
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Jenner. Will the following individuals line up, please? Rachel Dwyer, Denise Nystrom, Mark Gillespie, and Christine Divageli. And Ms. Dwyer, you may begin.
Rachel Dwyer, Lee County citizen. I do not approve of the EOS curriculum. If our system is inadequate, adding another curriculum will not fix the problem. The citizens of Lee County do not want to spend $250,000 for something that we should not...
I'm sorry, Ms. Dwyer, I apologize. I apologize, dear Ms. Dupree Bruno, and we can stop the clock and restart you. Are we able to take comments on anything or is it just for this agenda?
This is a...
I'm just trying to get clarification, so I do apologize for interrupting you.
This is an action meeting, so she can make her comment.
Thank you, I'm sorry, please...
That's okay.
Let her, okay, fix her clock, thank you.
So the Lee County citizens in whole, I believe, do not want this curriculum. We do not need to spend $250,000 for something that is not the crux of the problem and is ill-intentioned. The meeting that we're having today, I wonder, is this against the sunshine law? The last-minute nature of this, Ms. Giavanelle not being present? And with regard to the next superintendent, transparency is at the utmost importance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have Denise Nystrom and then Mark Gillespie.
As a point of information, it is confusing as to which meetings we can speak at and which meetings we cannot, and if we can speak to just the topic that's on the agenda or if we can speak to everything else, this should not be taking up my three minutes. Because I was confused, I would have come here with some other information, so if you could just restart.
Could you please start her at three?
I think we're back up as well.
Go ahead, Ms. Denise.
So since we can speak to other items, I want to go back to the code of conduct for a minute. I know that that's something that's going to be discussed and voted on on Tuesday's agenda. I wrote to you a letter in which I said that you can solve these problems and solve them in a way that would work for everybody in this community. I think that the code of conduct was absolutely overboard and in light of the new laws that the governor has signed and will go into effect effective July 1, I think that that should not be voted on prematurely and it needs to be looked at wholeheartedly and it needs to be looked at with the cisgender students in mind as well. Regarding the hiring of the interim superintendent, what I don't see is a list of questions that are going to be asked of this candidate. It would seem to me that protocol would be that you all submit questions to one another and then somebody put them together in an organized fashion so that you're all ascertaining the same information. That's not to say that during your discussions that you can't have them elaborate on something or ask a follow-up question, but it just seems to me that it doesn't make sense that all of you would be interviewing somebody and have a completely different set of questions. Thank you.
Do you mind if I take this off so I don't have to raise it? Good morning, my name is Mark Gillespie. I've lived in Lee County, Florida since 1986. I've raised three children down here, one's in the Army, one's an EMS student, and the other one's in the construction business. We had our children in public school for a number of years. We pulled them out because of what I felt was indoctrination of our kids. I continue to see that today. There is a difference between morality and immorality. There is a difference between the decisions that one person makes and what another decision that another person makes. The decision that one person makes in the way that they want to live their lives should not be forced upon those who disagree with that decision to believe and to necessarily honor. There is a way for all of us to live together. There is a way for this to be handled as far as the code of conduct without hate. But for six or seven people to sit there and mandate that a county of pushing a million people all has to agree to a very slight majority or a small minority of what people believe is what they want to live as is, in my opinion, wrong. As I sit out here and I hear the instructions from the bench saying that we're not to admonish anyone, I'm not going to admonish the board, but I am going to mention that I saw a video just this morning of one of the board members admonishing everybody that was in the audience. And I would like to remind you that she worked for us, not the other way around. As far as the upcoming superintendent, he needs to be transparent. There may be a fully qualified person here in Lee County to take that position, but without a nationwide search, without transparency, and with everything that's gone on over, of course, the last six months with this particular board, nobody's going to trust the decision that she made. Last time I was here, the halls were packed, standing room only. It was in the evening. We were all able to be here. I look around this morning, there is three, there might be 20 people here. And I don't think that's because that Lee County doesn't care about what's happening in their schools. I think it's because of the time that this was scheduled for. And I would say in the best interest of Lee County, in the best interest of our children, in the best interest of the parents in this district, that these meetings need to be scheduled at a time that is convenient for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Divageli, Corey Dai, Susan, Willie Earl Sparrow, Liz Kornitz.
Christine Divageli, good morning. So not to echo, you know, everyone else who is behind me, but I got to, I have to a little bit because I agree with them. I'm going to first start by finishing what Ms. Tara was trying to tell you guys and by saying number six, transparency is of the utmost importance. We require that a background check on any applicant and disclosure of findings must be shared with the public. Exclusion as a candidate should be the norm barring exceptional circumstances if they have any history of DUIs, felonies, domestic violence, charges, allegations of moral perpetuity, et cetera, or if they have been removed from cause for any position listed as work experience purportedly qualifying them for the position for superintendent. As with the prior point, full disclosure must be made by each candidate specifying if they are currently or have ever been an employee, vendor, supplier of the district or a family member of such person. Additionally, personal or business affiliations current or in the past with anyone involved or instrumental in the decision-making process of selecting the superintendent, including but not limited to the board members, facilitator, board attorney, staff, current superintendent, or one of the many assistants superintendents must be disclosed. If any candidate has made any campaign contributions to any of the board members, that information must also be disclosed. And then I would also like to say, I sent an email to you guys on the 14th. We're asking for the final scoring rubric that was referenced in the workshop the other day, as well as all of the other documents that were presented to the board by Mr. Cashman. Never received that, and also nothing is in board docs, like no attachments, which I find very rude. But I would also like, there are no minutes. I want that to be a part of this record as well. No minutes from any of the meetings since January. So there's, who has time to sit there and watch all of your videos? I know I don't have all that time, I'm still catching up from November of last year. So I don't have time to go back to January so I can get your minutes. That's something that is supposed to be a part of public record, and I would really appreciate if you guys would put that in there. The last thing I want to touch on is your decorum today. Please refer to how you behaved at the workshop and do not behave that way today. Robert's Rules of Order is something that you're supposed to abide by, and none of you did that the other day. You interrupted each other, you argued, you interrupted each other some more. You ignored Mr. Cashman, he didn't get a word in edgewise. So can you please just show a little bit more decorum today? Because last time it was not awesome. I don't think I have anything else other than, nope, I think that's it. So play nice today and thanks.
Corey Dai, active citizens together. I'm confused, this is an action meeting?
Hold on, Mr. Dai, because we're going to reset your clock.
So this is an action meeting, I was thrown off by that too. Apparently, everybody else was. I'll continue to make the point that the most important part of this process is community involvement. Every step of the process should involve the community. This is bigger than all of you. A superintendent may or may not outlast some of you breathing air. So this is really important. It's our superintendent. My youngest kid is six. How many years is he going to have to deal with this individual? So I think it's important. On the rubrics, I'd like to throw in the board experience in the same category as grammar. I think it's kind of a given. If somebody's really qualified for the job, they've worked with plenty of boards and teams and all of these things. What I don't like is you guys focused more on your own little individual nitpicky things than anything that had to do with efficiency, innovation, children, growth and development. How well can this person think outside the box? Right? Since lately all of our conversations have been about what box we check into, what about somebody that is outside of the box? Somebody who hasn't done any of this, that can look at it and say, well, I've helped hospitals reorganize. I could help you reorganize. Things like that. More things that are around creating opportunity inside of the district, funding programs, or creating programs that qualify kids to have a living wage instead of just raising the minimum wage. Let's give them a trade, teach them to weld, start HVAC trade schools, things like that, right? Let's give these kids lasting, lasting wealth in their pursuit for generational wealth, right? We all want to make money to give money to our kids and let them continue to grow and develop. So let's figure out ways to do that. Ways to better engage one another, even me, right? I need to find better ways to engage you guys sometimes. I'm sure most of you figured, ah, I don't know what he's going to say this time when he gets up there. You know, all of those things need to be a part of that process and we find what's important through that. I don't mind you guys arguing so much, I think that's democracy at its core. But let's actually get through the process instead of, you know, we want to argue to an end. So on that, thank you, Mr. Cashman, for continuing your brain-staking process of this. I wasn't a fan of you at first, but obviously it was... I wasn't a fan of you at first, but obviously it was necessary. Thank you.
My name is Susan. I've spoken in front of you many times and I have to let you know that you have all let me down. You have all failed, my child. I came to you begging, pleading, crying in the front row, scolding, begging, begging my son's high school to make accommodations for his medical exemption against a mask. No one has served my son well every year that he has been in the school system. He now has holes in his bedroom wall. He was Baker Acted last week. We have withdrawn him from your nasty, corrupt school system. My son will not see his prom. He will not get to throw his cap up in the air. Maybe that doesn't matter to him because all he wants to do is get out of this hellhole that he calls a school system. But I am a broken mother. I have signed him up to get his high school equivalency test. But first he has to do his TAEB test. He was supposed to be here at 8:30 this morning, Monday morning. So by email, I just said, "Hey, I just want to make sure he's not going to have to wear a mask because it's like six to seven hours of testing." I was told no. Then I was told that he would have to be evaluated for a 504. And I said, "Just to get out of the school system?" And he said, "Yes, we have to figure out if he meets the qualifications for a 504 and we'll have a committee meeting on it." And I said, "You've got to be shitting me. We're just trying to get out." And we weren't allowed that. How much do you want to put me through? How fair do you think that is? I told Brian Grandsky, or whatever his name is, that that's a HIPAA violation. You don't need to see any more diagnoses that he has. And you talk about a productive scholastic career? Where were the life skills? Who gives a shit about the LGBTQ? You teach the life skills. You teach these kids to read a book and do a book review.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Sparrow and Liz Kerens.
So? Okay. Hello, my name is Willie Earl Sparrow Jr., Center of Lehigh Acres, Florida. I would like to speak really quickly about transparency with the selection of the interim superintendent and as well as the superintendent. I do not, I do not know who has applied as of the 9 o'clock AM. The deadline was a few minutes ago. I hope and I pray that you will be very transparent with the community as far as the applicants and letting us know who applied, who became the top three or four candidates, when you would do open meetings with them and consider taking questions from the community, especially from the districts, about even who was going to be the interim person. It is written that you guys want the interim person to not apply and not be eligible for the superintendent position. It is my prayer and the of others that I represent that you do not change that because that's not fair to those individuals that are applying. Do not change that at the last minute. "Oh, we like you, so we'll let you apply for the superintendent position later." That's incorrect and that, things of that nature might put us in violation of EEOC. We do not want to pay any more settlements out to anybody with our tax dollars because of sloppy work done. So please, and I, I've been watching the videos and the treatment of my representative is appalling. And I will be doing everything in my power to watch and make sure we're equitable and nice and fair and kind and listen to each other, including my rep, Ms. Gittens. Thank you very much for your time and I look forward to hearing and seeing how transparent you are with both processes of the superintendent and the interim. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Liz Kerens. I'm a citizen of Lee County. The first thing I'd like to say is I just want to echo the woman over here. I think you all are a disgrace. I think you're a disgrace to our children. The fact that these children are still being masked and forced to wear them in school at the ripe old age of two years old is disgusting. If you actually cared, which I will also echo the gentleman who said that you work for us, and if you actually cared about our children, you would not hide behind political agendas whereby you're saying, "Oh, it's for the safety of our children." Well, have you considered the safety of that child? Have you considered the safety of all of these kids whose mental health, whose physical health has been compromised because you all sit behind there with your mask on and tell them it's safer for them to wear them? Have you actually observed a child at six years old fully play all day in a mask and what it actually looks like when they come home? Because if you did, if you actually did what you said you do, which is to care about our children, you would look at actual science. You would actually look at the science that says our children are basically not able to transmit this to adults. And hey, guess what? If you want a vaccine, adults and teachers' union members, go out and get one. I hear they have them at Target now. So if you actually cared about our children, if you actually cared about that boy, you would actually stand behind something, stand up for something and get them off our kids. At this point, I look at you all and I say, "You are abusing the children of this system and shame on you." Thank you.
No clapping, please, Madam Chair. This concludes public comment.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank you all for being here today. And I just want to, to give it just, at our last meeting, we did speak about how because of the time constraint and everything that we have to get done, that we may be having other meetings in between. We had scheduled, I think we had a hold on approximately eight dates going forward and we did state in between those that we may have to have other meetings. And so I know everyone up here was aware of that. We have to do that. Unfortunately, sometimes one of us cannot be here. That's never in the intention of myself or anyone else up here because we do want to make sure that everybody is being heard, as well as the public. So I just wanted to put that out there. Mr. Cashman will be going over the rubric today, so he'll, we'll get more information on that. Let's see. Ms. Susan, I, I hear you and I know we spoke before and I would definitely like to see what we can do to help you. So we'll, I'm going to try to get somebody to give you a call so we can...
You said you were going to help me before. There were three of you that said you were going to help me. You didn't follow through. There was no follow-through.
Ms. Susan, I'm just going to let you know that I will definitely be doing that, so...
It's done. It's done.
Ma'am, you're out of order.
No, you haven't.
Sorry.
Ms. Susan?
We need, we need to...
You're out of the school system. You told me I'm out of order.
Ms. Susan?
We...
Oh, my God.
Ma'am.
You guys are disgusting.
Ms. Susan?
I've been here every single meeting until you're all gone. You got that? I'm on all of you.
I go, I'm sorry, sir. We're, we cannot have a conversation between the board. I apologize, I just need to have... Thank you. Thank you. Sparrow, thank you regarding the applications. All of you who have come to speak about the applications, we definitely will be sharing that. We have no idea who has applied. We will be getting all that information. You all will be getting that information. Mr. Cashman will speak on that as well. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Cashman so we can go ahead and begin this conversation. Mr. Cashman?
All right, thank you, Chair Jordan. I'll go over the resume rubric and have one other suggestion. As was on the agenda, we'll go over the resume screening tool rubric. And if the board would like, I could walk through the interview timeline and recommended interview process, including categories and questions.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Cashman had a recommendation that after he goes over the rubric, if he could continue that conversation with us, is that okay with everyone? For him to continue the conversation?
We need to amend the agenda.
Pre-Bruno?
Madam Chair, you can entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include that interview process discussion.
Do I have a... Morgan?
I apologize because I can't get that on my screen. I apologize because I can't get that on my screen because of my computer setup. So I did not hear the question that you asked because I'm trying to find the email in which that document takes...
Ms. Morgan, because she cannot, she... Ms. Morgan, can you put the microphone?
I'm so sorry.
She cannot, her, the way her system is set up on the two ends, the computers cannot, she cannot get that on her computer, is what she was stating. Ms. Morgan?
Can't you change?
Could you finish your?
So, so I was saying that I wasn't voting because I didn't hear the question you asked because I was trying to load that document from my email file.
Thank you.
So if you would repeat the question, please.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ms. Gittens and then I'll repeat it. Ms. Gittens?
I'm just asking when it, since it's informational, rather than to amend and all of that, just do it for good of the order and it's informational. He's just giving information about the timeline, am I correct?
Is that what you?
I'm going to go over the interview timeline and I'll also recommend an interview process for the board to follow, including categories and questions.
So, okay, well then I'm a little bit confused because I thought that we were just doing the, the rubric today and then the questions and all would be at the next meeting. It's on the agenda for next week.
Mr. Cashman?
Yeah. We can, in terms of the question, what I'm asking is, we've spoken at a previous board meeting about the timeline. On Sunday, the 16th, I provided rubric and information, including some sample questions. So what I was recommending is today that I would walk the board through the interview timeline and some recommended questions and categories for the board to consider.
And, and my response is rather than amending our agenda, since it's informational, what he is going to give us, to just do it at the end as good of the order.
Mr. Pre-Bruno?
He could do that as well.
I'm just saying it would be simpler than asking for an amendment and voting and all.
Ms. Patrica?
I'm sorry, this is a special meeting. Board member comments are limited to items that are on the agenda and without that on the agenda, there is no good of the order and board members cannot discuss this during their comments unless it is part of the agenda.
This is a, this is a conversation that is flowing from the resumes and the rubric and your continued discussion in terms of your processes for this interim superintendent search, is that my understanding what it is, Mr. Cashman?
That's correct.
So you can do a motion to amend the agenda to include that item in case there is something that comes up that you need to vote on. If you are just going to discuss, if you're just going to give some information as part of your comments at the end, that's one thing. But if you're going to vote on it, there may be a possibility that there's a vote. You probably want to amend your agenda.
And then that would give public comments as well.
Yes, and then the public will have an opportunity to speak. Whenever there's a motion that's not from the agenda item, the public will have an opportunity to speak on that motion.
So, Ms. Gittens, did you have another question?
I just wanted to ask a question. So in an action meeting, we do not have good of the order?
You, you have your good of the order. I can't pull up the board policy right now because of the technical difficulties.
We'll discuss it later. Whatever everybody wants, that's fine.
So do we have, or do we, would you care to have the agenda amended then? So that way, if there is a vote and then also we would be able to have a public comment again? And I think that that would, they're here and I believe that we would give them an opportunity to speak again. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I, I don't think we're going to be ready to vote because usually what we do is, it sounds like Mr. Cashman is going to present questions that he has, but our normal procedure is then we have time to review those, which we really haven't, and then add or omit things on there. So I, I would say just to proceed and, you know, do it that way because I, I think we're going to have a bit of discussion on, on this rubric and I think that's our usual procedure.
Okay, so can I, Mr. Pre-Bruno, did you have?
It's to the board's discretion how they want to move forward.
Okay.
And Chair Jordan, if I may, just, just to clarify, what I would be presenting is recommended categories to the rubric and a recommended process to come up with questions. I wouldn't be presenting any questions.
So in hearing what he is saying, do we want to amend this or do we want to just keep it as conversation? It's up to you all. Ms. Vaughn?
I agree with what Ms. Gittens said, that it's informational and it's something that we need to take notes on and understand. And we have had questions at, at some point have been shared with us, but I prefer to get this done and then we move to that because I think we're going to muddy the waters an awful lot in even thinking about questions before we solidify the rubric. So that would be my feeling on it.
Okay, Mr. Cashman?
So in hearing this, I'm glad to start the facilitation specific to this resume screening rubric and then we can have other discussion if time permits.
Thank you. Is, is everybody in favor of doing that, allowing Mr. Cashman to go ahead and start facilitating it?
Please proceed.
Please.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. And I will keep my mask off while we're having this conversation based on the feedback provided last meeting. So on the screen, you will see the resume screening tool rubric. This is a rubric sample was sent out to everyone on Sunday, the 16th, for feedback. I'll walk through the rubric. What we want to do today is make sure we're having discussion on it and provide any feedback. We do need to finalize it today. As was discussed, all of the applications were due by 9:00 AM today, so the board is not accepting any more... so the board is not accepting any more applicants as of 9:00 a.m. Once this is finalized, we will make sure that a copy of this, along with the resumes, goes to each of the board members. So, so with that, I'll just walk through each of the sections, each of the categories. So the categories are based on education, work experience, budget and finance, communication, community involvement, problem solving and innovation together, and then total points would be earned. Under each one, and I'll just read through this and open it up to discussion. Under education, the board, and this is based on the job description, and I'll reiterate this, is a transparent process. This was taken from feedback and from the posting for the job. So under education, the candidate would hold a master's degree or higher from an accredited institution. Under work experience, the candidate would demonstrate a history of progressive responsibility as an executive in the public or private sector. They would demonstrate experience working with the board or experience with multiple supervisors at the same time. Under budget and finance, they would demonstrate experience preparing and presenting annual budgets that meet the needs of the organization. Under communication, they would demonstrate proper use of language, grammar, and punctuation. Under community involvement, they would demonstrate experience in engaging the community. And under problem solving and innovation, they would demonstrate ability to solve problems in an innovative manner. The scoring system is based on one, three, and five. Five, they do not meet the required, the requirement for successful job performance. Three is they meet the criteria for successful job performance. And five is they significantly exceed criteria required for jobs, for successful job performance. With that, I'll open it up to discussion and feedback. Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
I'm gonna be honest, I was extremely disappointed with this rubric. I feel it's way too simplistic. I was expecting the, the kind of rubric that has, under each of these, for each number, a, a description. So for instance, well, the easiest, the easiest example would be work experience. There's so many things that we could add as descriptors on why someone would score a candidate low. I wrote down some notes. For instance, under that, it might be gaps in employment history. It might be short-lived jobs. It might be, now it says progressively more, but it may be jobs that are, that even, even going backward or, you know, to, to a lesser job. I mean, there's so many things that are impossible to score. You know, holds a master's degree. Does everybody get a five? I had things that could go under that. Does this person have specialized certifications, specialized training? There, there are no descriptors, so everybody's gonna get, you know, I'm, I'm assuming that everybody who applies will have a master's degree. So, everybody gets a three? And if you have, no, I, yes, thank you, Ms. Morgan.
And if you-
Is that really all we're looking for? I know a lot of people with master's degree that wouldn't cut it as, as a superintendent, as a, as a, as a CEO. Is, is it not important to have some of the things that I mentioned last time? And is it not important to have those descriptors that go along with the one through five?
Yeah, and this is, and this is something we would finalize today. The staff has put some additional words together. We can work on pulling those up. Staff has pulled some additional wording if we wanted to, you know, at the board's pleasure, to add those descriptors. We have some descriptors in here and could certainly add more today if that's what you'd like.
Where are they?
Well, no, we would have, add more based on the feedback that the board is providing today.
Are you understanding what I'm saying? Like, I mean, it's so simplistic for education. Now they have a master's degree. They had a P, PhD or a doctorate of some kind. Okay, give them a five. But what if they're somewhere in between? Can we give fours as well, or do they not?
We were recommending one, three, and five to, just to help separate, you know, two points each as opposed to one, two, or three. And again, this would be something that the board can discuss and, and decide how you'd like. But the recommendation was one, three, and five to separate by two numbers as opposed to one.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna give up the floor here, but I'm very disappointed in this. It's very simplistic. There are no descriptors. That's how I'm used to, even as, as a teacher. If, if I had a rubric for an essay of some kind and I agree with the comment that was made and other simplistic uses grammar and punctuation, are we not evaluating? The other thing that's missing is the cover letter. For instance, and, and that's where you really would see maturity of style and that sort of thing. And an important question that is not here, that would be in the cover letter, if we can add that in, is why are you applying for this job? I would like to see that for every candidate. So I'm, I'm just very disappointed in, in the simplicity of, of this.
The suggestions I have is, as we're going through this, is to make sure the words and the scriptures, descriptions you'd like, we can make sure we're adding that to this. So as we're going through this, if you have recommendations, some additional recommendations from what was sent out on Sunday, we can add this to it. And again, it would be at the, you know, board's discretion how you'd want to proceed. But that would be something we should discuss and add to it today. So what recommendation would you have, Ms. Vaughn, that you'd like to add to these categories?
I wanna hear what my colleagues on the board feel. I've expressed my, my opinion on it and I think we're gonna have too big of a cluster of, of, you know, similar scores because this is not specific enough and there's so many things that could be added in, in addition. Community involvement, you know, civic engagement. Are there indicators, for instance? Is the person, and I'm not sure what a person might have on his or her resume, but, but certainly things that I mentioned before that I personally, but the, my fellow board members didn't think were important, were things like professional awards and recognitions. And as I said last time, it's not, I was Little League Coach of the Year. It's things like I was Superintendent of the Year in Ohio, or something like that. So I'm, I'm going to shut up now and let everybody else participate, but those are my thoughts.
Good, thank you, Ms. Patrica?
So I, I like the simplicity of it because it is a resume evaluation tool. It's really just a way for us to take all of the applicants in and find out who's actually qualified and who do we wanna interview. I believe the kind of rubric you're talking about is very appropriate for the interview process. But for me, this is just a matter of checking boxes and we do need to make sure that whatever is on this is in the job description and is what we published. And some of the items that have been discussed thus far were rejected for that very reason. They're not in the job description. So I believe the feedback I provided to you was exactly what I just said. I, I like this rubric, it's fine, it, it serves the purpose. But for an interview, I'd, I'd like to see more descriptors in the rubric for the various categories, one through five. How, like what is a one, what is a two, what is a three? And, and I believe that will be forthcoming.
That's, that's correct. Thank you. Ms. Gittens? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher and then Ms. Gittens.
Thank you. So I sent my response back saying that I felt that this was adequate for an initial screening so that we could come to eliminate people who may not be qualified on the outset and then we would narrow it down to the people that we would be interviewing. At which time, then, I thought that the questions, which included things like, why are you applying for this job? You know, what can you bring to the table, are appropriate. So I, I'm satisfied with this rubric at this point and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
I, I, I hear everybody's comments about it. I have a bit of angst about the simplicity of it because it's very objective. My bachelor's degree is in psychology, so I could look at someone's, you know, educational background and think, oh, they did psychology, that's great. And give them a better score than someone who has, you know, in law or in education or whatever. So, and, and the bottom line to it is, yes, this is just the initial screening, but that lends itself to the potential of getting rid of a qualified, good candidate because we objectively don't, you know, screen them out during this process. And that's, that's kind of what I'm concerned about. What Ms. Patrica was saying, if it's, did we ask for a cover letter in the ad? And if we did, then cover letter to me fits the area of proper use of language and grammar and punctuation. I thought that's what that would be used for, under communication. But I, I just, I understand that we're going to get deeper into the rubric type thing later on, but I am very concerned that we could eliminate someone that could be a viable candidate because objectively, oh, I like this, or I like that, and it becomes an I rather than a whole.
Each of the applicants would have a cover letter and resume shared with you. Ms. Morgan?
And I will remember to put my mic down this time. I apologize for failing to do it last time. So I, I had initial angst also. I thought, gosh, we need to flesh out this rubric a little bit. And then I went back and I thought about it and I, and I have to agree with what's been said, that this is simply an interview or a application.
It's a resume screening tool.
Yeah, resume screening tool. I would like, so that it becomes a matter of record, not an other, but a place to make notes so that when we talk about the questions, things that arise as a result of our reviewing the applications may become part of the interviews that we wanna ask the candidates. So I'm, I'm comfortable, excuse me, I'm comfortable with this as is, but I do think there ought to be a way to, to make notes so that, well, I just think there ought to be a way to make notes. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens?
If we're, you know, if, it sounds as though the majority is going to go with keeping this, you know, if you ask. However, can we then discuss maybe a time limit of each thing so that we have an idea what we're all looking for? That it's somewhere close together? I mean, not just, my interpretation of one of these statements may be totally different from everybody else. So I'm just saying, can we do each one and say, okay, how, what does that look like to you? What would you be looking for quickly and easily?
I think-
Yeah, after Ms. Fisher, we'll, we'll go back.
So, thank you. So it is 10:29 and I think that at this point, we need to allow Mr. Cashman to proceed. So then we can make our suggestions for any specific descriptors that we need to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I have, I have one other comment. A couple of my colleagues have said this is just a screening tool to get rid of, you know, eliminate people that don't meet the basics. But our objective with this was to narrow it down to, we wanted, we said three to five candidates. And I have no idea if we have 37 candidates or four right now. But if we're using this to narrow down, we have to have some better, obviously, I'm, I'm not voted, but I'm just gonna say my piece on this. I think we're asking for trouble with this. I think we're gonna have a chunk of numbers that are very similar. And I think the other thing is, before we move on, we better remember to talk about how we are going to come back as a board with those three to five. In other words, and, and Mr. Cashman, you and I had talked about this briefly before the last meeting. I said, what are we gonna do? Are we going to, I was doing some research online. Are we gonna do a yes, no, maybe, and compare those? Are we going to take each of us our top ones? Are we going to, you know, somebody scores a 40 and somebody scores, and then I score 40, Ms. Morgan a 37? Are we gonna take the seven and average them? We need to have that settled as well on how we're gonna get down. Because isn't that our objective with this?
Yes.
So-
And I'll make a comment, one-
I'm seeing problems with it, but I'm in the minority, but I did want to express that.
Yeah, certainly we wanna make sure that each of you weighs in and adds some additional descriptions you'd like to see in this. If, if you'd like to see some additional ones. And, you know, if you'd like, I could speak to the recommendation on how it would be scoring. Chair Jordan, did you have a comment?
Yes, and Ms. Vaughn, I think that's why, like, whatever your recommendations, we can, Mr. Cashman can put these in here now for us to use those. And I'm gonna just ask Ms., if you don't mind, Ms. Lizette, could you please tell us approximately where, what number are we at as far as resumes? Because you are the only person who knows this.
We are looking at over 30 candidates at this time.
Okay, so there's over 30 candidates. And, and I also want to say too, Ms. Gittens, I, I, I understand now that I had looked at this, but now that you had mentioned it regarding the master, the master's degree, what is that master's degree in? Because it could be in anything. So I think that maybe we could put something in there or add something? A master's degree in administration or something, not just a, a master's degree in horticultural? I mean, I, it needs to be, I think it needs to be tuned in.
And Ms. Gittens?
And that's what I meant about asking everybody what they felt about that particular question. Because do you wanna limit it to, maybe you got your master's in horticulture, but you went on to work at a horticulture university and you ran the university and you did this? So is, you know, do we want to limit it to, say, education or this or that? Because that horticulture masters at that school may be something that is a person that really is good to help us, you know, it's education. So I was just asking the question, how does everyone else feel about the master's degree? Is that enough just to say a higher master's or higher? Is that it? Are you looking at it differently if somebody has the horticulture or education? Because that's going to separate who gets on that final list.
So what I'd like to suggest then is, we'll go through each category just so we receive common additional detail, discuss how you would be looking at each of these categories. And at, at that point, we'll, we'll, we'll add in some notes if you'd like, some additional descriptions. So if we, if we took each category, if everyone was okay with that, I can walk through each category, get your comment, how you're all looking at it, and any additional descriptors so we can add it in right now. Would that be okay?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. So under education, some additional feedback, what you'd like to see that's not currently in there?
Ms. Morgan?
Ms. Morgan?
Okay. I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with it as is.
Ms. Vaughn?
Only thing I could think about adding were additional specialized coursework.
Okay.
Training, additional coursework, training, certifications, that kind of thing, because that would be part of education as well.
Okay, so we'll include that in, we'll include that as a potential. Ms. Gittens?
I agree with Ms. Vaughn's statement, and otherwise, I think it's fine, as long as we are open-minded that, like our discussion about horticulture. So I just want to make sure everybody has that in their mind.
Chair Jordan?
I would be okay with adding on what Ms. Vaughn had said. I would appreciate that. I mean, my sister has a degree in that, but I would not want her running this.
In horticulture.
Sure, additional comments under education?
Yes, I'm comfortable with it as is, because most people will add those things in their resume, and we'll get to see them as we review their resumes.
Are you also comfortable if we add the comments suggested by Ms. Vaughn?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Through the chair, Ms. Vaughn, could you repeat your comments, please?
I said, under education, they might have some kind of specialized training or certifications that are relevant to their professional position.
And that's, that's great. And that's actually where I was looking for, when I saw one, three, and five, I thought we were given the option of a two and a four as well, because that's where things like that would fall in for me.
Yeah.
So if I have an applicant that has, that does not have a master's degree, it's not just a one if they have a certification from Harvard in interest-based bargaining, for example. That puts them higher than a one, but still below a master's degree. So I want that flexibility to be able to use the two and the four as well, if the board is amenable. Otherwise, I agree. I don't know that that language needs to be in there as much as it needs to be in our head. We know that a four could be special certifications or special education, and the five is the PhD.
So based on that, what I'd suggest is, we'll walk through the categories, and then we'll look at scoring one, three, and five, and see if the board would like to add the two and the four and just the description to that. We can go to that afterwards. So thank you for those suggestions. Eva here?
Sorry, Ms. Jivinelli.
Jivinelli?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't want you to forget that I'm here.
Absolutely not.
We'll never forget you.
I agree with what Ms. Vaughn said, and certifications and specialization of training or et cetera, so I, but I do understand that this is just the first part of the process.
Jivinelli?
I just want to bring up, yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
One other thing, I received an email that there was some resumes after the nine o'clock cutoff, and I recognize that there is 30, but since we've been having technical difficulties with our website, is, if that's something that's on our end, I would recommend that we accept these resumes that are, those additional resumes.
Jivinelli, I believe it was the, the website had the problem, our emails were not having issues. Is that correct?
No, it was all done.
That's correct.
That's, that's what I thought. Yeah, so the emails, they were able to receive, and they received them up until 9:00 a.m. this morning. It was, had nothing to do with our emails.
Ms. Morgan?
Okay, but, well, I just think that we need to be, I'm concerned that there could be that one or two resume that might have been outstanding that just did not make the nine o'clock cutoff for whatever reason, time zone, whatever. And then I just, since we are having some technical difficulties, I can't even get on YouTube with a computer so to watch this myself, it just leaves it open. I just, and I recognize, I'm not saying throughout the day, we still keep accepting resumes. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, these a couple this morning or whatever. I don't know how many it is, if somebody could say.
What is the question?
Ms. Roman, can you share one more time, how many were received by 9:00 a.m.? You said a little over 30. Did I hear that correctly?
Over 30 candidates, yes.
Over 30 candidates, okay. Ms. Jivinelli, was there anything else?
No, that's it. I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much.
So we'll go to Ms. Morgan and then Ms. Gittens.
Yeah, I like what was just said, and so I'm thinking, maybe what we need to say for education is hold a master's degree or higher from an accredited institution and/or, and I think we ought to be able to give and/or credit for some other sort of accreditation that's not a master's. I think that would, no? Okay.
Okay, Ms. Gittens and then Ms. Patrica. Ms. Patrica? Yeah, Ms. Gittens?
So, actually, that's what the additional certifications or degrees would be, in specialized degrees. I, my question was, we received the 30 by 9:00 o'clock, were there any afterwards, just to answer that question?
Ms. Roman, could you answer?
Yes.
Can I ask how many were after 9:00?
So there's one concern that I have, is that you advertised for a specific date and a specific time.
And I understand that, however, when I couldn't get on, and I couldn't update my emails at the time, and that was just about at 9:00 o'clock when I arrived, and a little after 9:00. So I, and I agree with Ms. Jivinelli that we're not talking about all during the day, but we came up at about 10:00 or so. And I would think that anything up until that point, because I was with the technician in my office and could not refresh and could not get on.
I think, I think we would have to get clarification from IT as to whether or not it was just the website that was down, or whether or not the email was malfunctioning as well. Because if the email was functioning and you did advertise for 9:00 this morning today, and the email was working, that's one thing. If the email was not working, then the board can take that into consideration.
Can we please get a clarification on that? Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Cashman?
Ms. Patrica, did you have a comment?
So, I, maybe it wasn't clear. A master's degree is the, is the baseline requirement. So I'm not suggesting that, that an accreditation or a certification other than a master's degree should be a three. What I'm suggesting is that if someone has a bachelor's or nothing, they're a one. If they have some kind of certification but not a master's degree, that could be a two. If they have a master's degree plus other certifications, that could be a four. And if they have a PhD, that could be a five. That, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not in any way suggesting that the master's is not the baseline minimum.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, so now I'm reflecting on it, and I don't think the master's should be a baseline. I think there are people who have extraordinary professional experience who do not have academic credentials that, that support their, their professional achievement. But I'm not going to say, don't put it in. I'm just saying, when I look, now that I think about it, when I look at it, for me, okay, I'll make it a baseline, but I will make comments to the effect that, for me, that's not necessarily an operative or important word in my ultimate conclusion on a candidate.
Thank you, Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Fisher?
I don't know how to say this without coming across as being rude. I'm not trying to be rude, but it's too late.
Ms. Fisher? Ms. Patrica, were you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
I was, I was just going to comment that it's in the job description.
And that was a nicer way to say it. I'll try to be nicer.
Any additional comments on education, under education?
Mr. Cashman, I just have a general comment. If the board has 30-plus applicants, and on the 24th, you have to go through and pick your top three, five, and then vote on the 25th, which is Monday and Tuesday, the more information that you can get from those resumes to try to filter those 30 candidates, especially, you know, the individuals who have to calculate all of this, the more helpful it's going to be, because that's a very, that's a wide pool of people that probably all have master's degrees or something higher.
Thank you. Any more descriptors we want to add to education? You want to add? Under work experience, any additional suggestions to work experience? Ms. Vaughn?
Okay. Things that are red flags would be gaps and short-lived jobs. It might not be, there might be extenuating circumstances, but certainly, those are things, those are things to look at. The other thing that, I'm not sure, let's see, multiple supervisors, size of the organization, I think is an important factor that we don't have here, because we can have a very successful business manager woman who is CEO of a company with 20 employees. And, I mean, I mean, this, I really think organizational size, and it's, you know, working with the board and, and all of that would tacitly say, yeah, it's a big organization that has a board and all of that. But, but again, you, I think it's important, because we have a huge organization with so many moving parts, and I think that should be something in the work experience column.
Thank you. And what I'm hearing when you, when you're sharing that is, that may be how you were looking at this, and Ms. Gittens was sharing the same thing in terms of how you're going about looking at these candidates. So, you know, putting that in there, again, for the board as you're considering that, is the size of the organization. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah, because a successful CEO of a smaller company, albeit very successful, that might be a three, hits it. But, you know, if it is a small company, it's going to be a huge transition.
Right.
And also, you know, if it's a very tiny school district, it's, may or may not be a plus if somebody has that kind of experience. I think organizational size, or, I mean, they're not going to say this, they might, they might say this is an organization of 1,400 people or something like that, but they might not. But we can always take a look at, you know, who are they working for? Just a thought.
And again, as we're going through this, I know we have about 50 minutes to complete this, so we'll continue going. And Ms. Fisher, and then Chair Jordan, and then Ms. Gittens?
So I would agree with consideration for the size of the organization, but I just do want to mention that in today's business world, there are such things as interim executives who do move from place to place for short periods of time to fill gaps. And this is exactly what we're looking for with this particular position.
Thank you. Ms. Gitt, I'm sorry, Chair Jordan?
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn, thank you for saying that. I do agree with that. But a lot of these, these are like a, to me, these are guidelines. And so when I'm looking at the resumes and their cover letters, those questions are already in my, in my head as far as the gap, because I would not hire a person to work for me that had a job every week. So some of those things are just, I guess, I don't want to say common sense, but things that we should already know to look for. So I don't know if we can put every single thing on here that we know what we're looking for, or if we really need to do all that. I mean, it's, it's up to you all, but I'm good with whatever you decide to do.
Thank you. Ms. Gittens?
Actually, the word progressive and demonstrates a history of progressive responsibility speaks to gaps and short-lived jobs. As Ms. Fisher was saying, there are people that that's what they do, and they progressively move on. If it's progressive, if you are moving up or at least staying at a certain level, then that covers the gaps and short-lived. I just, I don't know. That can be very, very tricky in today's workforce to say gaps and short-lived. And if they're good across the board at everything else, then they may get high scores across the board, and we still, you know, want to talk to them about that one thing, but just not, you know, put them in the no basket and do the rest negatively because of that one thing.
Thank you. Ms. Jivinelli, any comments?
No, I'm good, thank you. I appreciate what everybody's saying.
Thank you. If everyone's okay in sharing that, we're going to move on to budget and finance. Any additional description you'd like to add under budget and finance? We took it, Ms. Gittens?
So are we going to leave in flags, gaps, and short-lived jobs, or has everyone agreed on that?
Last one, I was just asking.
Under flags, gaps. Yeah, under flags, gaps. Part of this was for the discussion in terms of what you're considering in there. We don't, this would be up to the discretion of the board. Part of this was the descriptions you'd like to add, and then the other part was the discussion you're having, just so you know how each of you were looking at that. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I have a question on work experience. So that's going to be worth 10 points? Those two should be separated out, and I'm going to...
Which two?
Under work experience. Demonstrates is one, demonstrates a history for five points, up to five points, and demonstrates experience for up to five points. I think we need to put at least 10 points on, on that, because certainly, that's, she's on, she's on work experience.
Yeah, so let's go, so, yeah.
Before we go on to budget and finance, I had that question.
So in hearing that, that would be a recommended change in the rubric, which would be something to just ask for you to vote on. But what I would suggest is, for now, let's just break those two out. Under work experience, it'd be a total of 10 points, just to hear if some, if there's some additional discussion. And so we're, we're honing in on work experience before we move on to budget and finance. So the suggestion is, break out those two questions, so it would be, work experience, there'd be progressive, work to responsibility, and then responsibility specific to the board experience. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be the same.
Yeah.
To me, it looks like it's two different things.
But you'd like to see that under, you'd like to see, under work experience, there would be two categories, which would come to a total of 10 points.
Right.
Okay? Additional feedback? Is there discussion, just to make sure we have agreement before we move forward? Ms. Gittens?
I mean, I understand what she's saying. I think we can accomplish the same thing, having them under work experience, but putting one and two or five points and five points, as long as we understand that there's 10 points, it could stay as one category.
Yeah, one category.
What's that?
Instead of two side by side, is what we're saying.
Currently, right now, the way work experience sits, it's based on five points, not 10 points. So we would, we would have to break it into two categories, work experience, to get a total of 10 points, if that's what the board would like. So why don't we do this? So just, we're going to take a, we're going to take a vote on that one. Chair Jordan, is that appropriate for me to just ask for that?
Yes, for consensus.
So, so what we're asking is, the request is, we're going to break work experience into two categories. So it would be five points for one, five points for the other, for a total of 10 points under work experience. That would provide a higher percentage rating for work experience currently than the other categories. So if I could get a... So, if I could get a thumbs up, and we'll just start with...
Patrica.
Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Giavennelli will go to you after we've, we've seen what others. Ms. Patrica?
Thumbs up.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Gittens?
Yes.
Yes.
Sideways.
Sideways? Is it, yeah, okay. Thank you. And Ms. Giavennelli?
However, I have, I have just a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at, doesn't have anything to do with budget or finances. Has that been updated, and I don't have that?
It says budget and finance. That's where we're going to go.
When I'm looking at it, it was sent to me...
Hmm. Yeah, the resume screening rubric does have budget and finance. We're going to go through that next.
Ms. Giavennelli, I just emailed you the one that I have.
What, what you sent me was not, I need to get that.
I just sent you another email with the, the rubric on it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm, I'm stumped up.
Okay.
Mr. Patterson, go ahead, please.
Chair Jordan, you okay if I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Gittens, did you have a comment?
No, I think we're on to budget and finance. I think it's fine.
Okay. Any other comments on budget and finance? Okay. Communication, also five points. Any additional comments? One of the comments that was made earlier was adding within their resume and cover letter. So, is everyone okay with that wording? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, it's kind, somebody in the, in the, one of our speakers had said, it's pretty basic, instead of just proper use of language, the person should demonstrate stylistic maturity in the cover letter.
So, you'd like us to add stylistic maturity in there?
Stylistic maturity, as well as proper grammar use, grammar and punctuation usage.
We'll capture that for consideration. Ms. Patrica?
I think that's more of an interview category than it is a resume category. If you're, if you're a traditional applicant, you're going to keep it to the bare minimum, and you're not going to be more flowery in your language, and if you're a more modern applicant, you might address it differently. I think that communication is a huge part of what we would be looking for in an applicant, and that can, we can get into more detail with that in a rubric with a writing sample, should we decide to make that part of the interview process.
May I respond?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we were also taking a look at the cover letter in this, and if we want to get down to what you're saying, there are rubrics that specifically outline the proper format of a resume. For instance, the bullet points, parallel structure, the use of an active verb, you know, demonstrates, exhibits. So, I, I think, you know, I'm going to go back to what our board attorney said, with that many applicants, and our goal of getting this down to three to five people, we have to be able to look at the nuances in this. We can't be simplistic. We need to, you know, we're going to be here forever if we can't narrow it down to three to five to actually take to the next phase, which would be the interviewing process. So, if...
Yeah, I, I agree. Would suggest that you add the additional detail you'd like to help you narrow it down, and, because as you're looking at the scoring, and it's come up, and we could speak to it later, we, we will look at each of your respective scores. So, each of you will be narrowing it down to your top three to five, and then we're going to look at the collective group's top three to five and compare them. So, it won't be a total scoring. It's going to be each one of you looking at scoring and turning in your top three to five. We'll have the scoring for everybody, but we want to make sure it's clear that each of you has a top three to five, and then we can compare each of the board members. So, certainly, we want to, want to ensure that you add the appropriate detail so you could score accordingly.
Could we call this written communication, since that's what we're evaluating, as opposed to oral communication when we do the interview?
Yeah, we can add written communication and then see how the group...
It is written. I mean, it's obvious.
Ms. Gittens?
It's kind of obvious that it's written, but...
Add that in. Ms. Gittens?
I think the beauty of this will be that we all have different views of these different topics, and I would, you know, I could point out a couple of my colleagues that this one is going to be particularly important to them, and they will go through very, very specifically, whereas the rest of us, you know, do you have your periods and your commas and, you know, is it basically right? So, I think that's where, when you do the, the adding it all up, that, that's going to come in, and that's the beauty of having seven different ones.
Okay, so you have, is there any additional feedback on communication? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, one more thing. I appreciate what Ms. Gittens said, but this is why we're talking about this, and this is the purpose of a rubric. If you have a group of people scoring, my experience would be essays, okay? You want to have them on the same page. You want them, you know, yeah, maybe I can see an Oxford comma that's not there, misplaced, whatever. That's not the point. The point is, has the person been careful in his or her written communication to us? And, you know, that could include the cover letter as well, and also, if you wanted to get down to what Ms. Patrica said, has the person followed a, you know, and I know there are many forms of resumes, but all of them have to have, they're going to have the parallel structure and, and certain aspects to, to look at as well. So, I think all of those things are things that all of us should be looking at, and we need to be on the same page, hence a rubric.
Any additional description you'd like to add to this one? Ms. Gittens?
Maybe we could just add, like, Ms. Vaughn said the word written.
Yep, we've included that, right?
Right, Ms. Giavennelli.
So, we've gotten that one. That's captured on there.
Ms. Giavennelli?
For now, yeah. Ms. Giavennelli?
I, um, I personally think that most of these applicants, if they meet the criteria, they're going to meet the right examples, but...
Do you have any?
I agree with the board.
Thank you.
Any additional descriptions you'd like to add?
No, I think everyone's pretty much covering it very well.
Okay. We have one, one more, and then we'll go and we'll look at the scoring. Problem solving and innovation. Any additional words you want to add to the description to help differentiate the candidates? I'm sorry, not, I'm sorry, not problem solving. We're going to community involvement.
Thank you.
Additional feedback on community involvement to help differentiate? Chair Jordan?
I, I think that that is broad enough where, if they do have experience in engaging in the community or whatever they do within, I think will be on their resume or on their cover letter. So, I think this is fine.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher.
Yeah, and, and I was just going to say, I'll be looking for volunteer participation and for membership in different local fraternal and community organizations.
Would you like us to add that for consideration? Volunteer, volunteerism, and membership in community organization?
Not necessarily. I think I like the simplistic, demonstrates experience and engaging with the community, but those will be the things I'd, I'd be looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Giavennelli, anything else under community involvement?
No, I'll, I'll be looking for the, what they demonstrate that in their resume, so I'm not worried about it.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Vaughn.
So, in scoring this, so we're all on the same page, demonstrates experience, engaging the community, that's real different, or somewhat different, from civic engagement. In other words, being a member of the Rotary Club, or volunteering at a food pantry, something, something like that, that might be the descriptors under this. So, if they have experience, we scored a three. Is that it? I just want...
Yep, that's for each of you to discuss here.
I'm only saying that because we need to be on the same page.
Right.
What, so if they're a member of one club, is that this, and is that the same as engaging the community? Not really.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica? Oh, go ahead. Finish, and then...
To me, being involved in any type of community organization is being engaged within the community, whether it's the North Fortmire Civic Center, Hispanic Vote, or whichever, whatever that looks like to us, you're being, you're, you are in engage, you are engaging with the public and the community. You can't really say that if you only engage with this group, that's considered community engagement. So, to me, anything that you do outside of your norm and with the public, and you're out there, to me, is community engagement.
Yes.
Ms. Patrica, did you have additional feedback?
I was just going to say that, you know, being a member of the Rotary Club is community engagement. That, to me, is the very definition of community engagement.
Ms. Vaughn?
I'm going to be the wordsmith. When you engage the community, what you are doing is saying, we need this, and I'm going to go out, or I'm the president of this organization, and I'm starting something, or if you're engaged, like civic engagement, I mean, I'm a member of some clubs where basically I pay my dues. I'm a member of one organization where I work really, really hard, and I'm out there in front doing stuff, and I don't know how we can tell it, but I, I just want to point out, engaging the community is very different from civic engagement. I mean, at least in, in my mind, it is. So, but it can stay there, but it's different.
Understand.
Sorry.
Ms. Gittens?
Well, I just think that, I mean, I like the simplicity of it because, again, it's going to be objective. If the person is a part of several organizations and they're just a member, or they may show, I'm sure they'll show if they're the chair, or they headed up the, you know, the community funding committee, and they raised this amount of money, I think they will let us know that, which will show their engagement in the community. So, I'm fine with that.
Ms. Giavennelli? Ms. Giavennelli? Any additional comments on the community?
I agree, I understand. There's a difference between engagement and actually being active and working on a board. So, I think it just depends, I mean, it's going to be objective, and I'm just going to have to be able to ask the right questions and try to look through it. I mean, there's one thing going on Thanksgiving of being the homeless at a, at a, you know, at Harry Chase, and, and then someone being on the list of Harry Chase, and so, I got it.
So, might I suggest, when each of the board members are taking a look at those, that you're looking at, you know, the level of involvement and engagement within those categories, because what will be recommended to the board is, as you're looking at the scoring, and we'll go again through the scoring, whether it's one, three, and five, or one through five, is that you go through the scoring and you'll help narrow it down to your top three to five, and then we'll look at each member's top three to five. Any additional feedback on community involvement? Last category would be problem solving, is problem solving and innovation. Any additional feedback? Everyone okay? Ms. Giavennelli, any additional feedback? On problem solving, okay. Yeah, Ms. Gittens?
Before you move on to scoring, I, I forgot to mention something in budget and finance. I would like to propose, where it says demonstrates experience, preparing, presenting annual budgets, that we put preparing, presenting, and managing, because it's one thing to be on the team to set up the budget, but somewhere along the line, if something goes awry and funding stops, and then you have to stop and regroup, that management piece is very important to me, anyway.
Okay. Any concerns? Everyone good if we add and managing? Any concerns? Ms. Morgan?
I like it, I like it, but I'm concerned that, that we'll see that in a resume. That, that would be my only comment.
May I respond?
Yeah, Ms. Gittens?
I think it's, just adding it, to me, is just a reminder to us to look for that part of the process. And, and again, this is only for our eyes as we're going through, so...
Thank you. Any additional comment, Ms. Morgan? Okay. Any other comments on that category? Okay, and then, so we have the categories laid out here. We have added work experience, so that would be counted as double, the others, and the scoring criteria is five, three, and one. And attorney de pré, Bruno, I'll just ask you to weigh in, as I'm just walking through this, on the categories one, three, and five, those are the rating system we've put in. If the, the board, what I'm hearing is, some are recommending we add two and four, which might be words like partially meets, you know, or one step above meets before it's significantly meets. So, I want to, I want to go over two things. One would be, is there an interest to add scoring system two and four? Let's take that first. Is there interest in adding two and four? A show of hands, so...
Verbal consensus, please.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
I will say yes.
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 All right. Yes.
Thank you.
And Ms. Giavennelli? Cannot vote.
I don't, that's what I, that's what I heard, that Ms. Giavennelli's...
It's not a form of vote, you're taking a consensus.
Is it a consensus?
Ms. Giavennelli?
Yes.
I can do that.
That's correct. Ms. Giavennelli?
Like, this is, I mean, y'all might know the difference between voting and consensus.
Ms. Giavennelli, you can take a, you can participate in the consensus.
Ms. Giavennelli?
I want to make it clear that, that everyone understands the difference as a board.
Yes, thank you.
Are you also in support of two and four, added?
I am.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
And so, might I suggest, again, we can look at the wording, because this will go out to each of you, that two could be partially meets criteria, just to use a word, or is there another word you'd like to use? Would partially be okay?
Sorry, say that one more time.
I'm sorry. So, what I'm suggesting is, for score two, partially meets criteria for successful job performance.
Can, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Gittens?
Can, can you just read through the whole, what...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Three, four, five.
Yeah, so five would be significantly exceeds criteria required for successful job performance. Three meets criteria for successful job performance, and one does not meet criteria required for successful job performance. So, looking for suggestions for, for number two first, and then we'll go to four. So, for two, are there suggestions? Ms. Gittens, and then Ms. Patrica?
Four could be adequately, I, I mean, just throwing it out, I don't know what anyone else thinks.
Number four could be adequately or two?
Four... 4.
Number 2 first. Number 2 first.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So number 2, is there a suggestion?
You have a suggestion of...
Okay. So if everyone's okay, we would say "partially meets require criteria." Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. Vaughn is thinking, suggesting minimally, instead of partially?
Partially, minimally.
Okay. Is there a preference of minimally or partially? Partially?
Partially.
Okay. Anyone else? So we'll leave it with partially? And then 4, this would be between "meets criteria" and "significantly exceeds criteria." Is there a word, Ms. Patrica?
Just exceeds.
Exceeds, okay. Is there comfort with exceeds, or other suggestions?
Ms. Javonelli?
Yeah, Ms. Javonelli?
Exceeds is fine.
Exceeds is fine. Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Fisher?
I'm fine.
You're fine with exceeds, Ms. Fisher?
Well, if 5 is exceeds...
It's significantly exceeds.
Significantly exceeds.
5 is significantly exceeds. 4, the recommendation is exceeds.
Okay.
Everyone okay with this? I'll turn back over to Ms. Jordan, just for the consensus.
Can we have a consent, Ms. Javonelli? Do you agree on the new for number 2 and 4? Partially meets requirement and exceeds to be added onto the scoring guide? Thank you. Ms. Patrica?
Yes.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Gittens?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And yes for myself, thank you.
Thank you all for walking through this. So what we'll do is, the Board Office will send out this rubric to everyone with resumes and cover letters. I just want to walk through the scoring specific to this, how that's going to work. And this is, you know, Attorney DePree Bruno, I just appreciate you weighing in to make sure I'm capturing it correctly. No later than 4:00 p.m. today, you'll have all the resumes, cover letters, and this updated rubric. What we'd ask is that you score the rubric, and it's in a document. You'll be able to score 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. There'll be, and there'll be instructions in terms of how you score 1 through 5. It will total automatically. The one thing that we'd ask, based on your recommendation to bring it to 3 to 5, is each of you goes through, you've heard the number of resumes submitted, applicants submitted, that each of you goes through and narrows it to your top 3 to 5 as well, going through that. Just so, as this discussion showed, we don't want everyone showing up with the same scoring and turning it in, and then we'd have seven board members doing that. So I'd ask for each of you to go through the scoring and make sure it's clear that we have a top 3 to 5 in each of yours. Those scoring sheets will go to me and Attorney DePree Bruno to just take your scores. We're just gonna take each one of your scores. We'll put it in a summary document that includes each of your scores, and then we'll be able to show the summary of everyone's top 3 to 5 choices, so we could see the overlap and discuss that at your next meeting. Ms. Gittens?
I think it was Ms. Morgan that mentioned about a comment. I would really like to have that, did we decide yea or nay on that? Or can we put a column that has numbers beside the name, so then at the bottom, we can just say, "Number 1, this is our comment," or, I'm not sure how to do that.
So the request is to add a comment section. So we can add a comment section. The total points earned will score automatically. You'll be able to see the total points scored. So, you know, one of the objectives is for you, as you're looking at the scoring, you make sure you have a clear top 3 to 5 choices. But if it's the pleasure of the board, we can add a notes section as well, because that could be considered, you know, as you're going into the future interviews for the finalists. Attorney DePree Bruno, did I say that correctly?
That's my understanding, yes, that's the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any other feedback? Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. So, each of us will have our top 3 to 5, and then you will segregate into different areas, the top, all the top 3 to 5, or...
So what we'll do is, we'll have all of your scores, so each one of you will have your own scoring sheet.
Right.
And then what we want to make sure is that each one of you has a clear top 3 to 5. We'll then work in putting a summary document together that will include everybody's top 3 to 5 with their scoring, and the score per section that's laid out here. So each of you will see the scores that you provided for each section, and your collective top 3 to 5. And, you know, and then we'd look for overlap, and then the board would make the final determination.
Okay, and it's that last step. How is that final determination made? Because we have a maximum here of 35 points. And we're gonna have a lot of duplicate. In other words, how do we make the final determination?
So...
We're not all gonna have the same 3 to 5. So how...
Right.
We have that whole list with all the 3 to 5.
Yep.
How do we come to that?
And we can walk, oh, go ahead, Attorney DePree Bruno.
So you have a briefing that's scheduled for Monday at 9:00. And that's the purpose of that briefing, for you guys to sit down, the board to review, discuss your top choices, and then boil it down to the board's 3 to 5.
Right. So, go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
The problem I have is, I feel very strongly, I've said that earlier in this process, that we need to have, it's cemented, what we're going to do with these. Because if we don't, what could happen is, there can be manipulation, and, I mean, I really feel like we need to have a very specific way that we're going to decide.
Yeah, and again, and I'll ask Attorney DePree Bruno to make sure he weigh in, that I'm sharing this correctly. Each of you, each of you would have your top 3 to 5.
I get it.
Yep, and then each of you will show here. Then we'll bring each of those names to the board here, to the briefing, and then you'll all walk through it and collectively determine the top 3 to 5 you're picking. Chair Jordan?
So, yes, based on...
How? Based on what?
No, Ms. Vaughn, I understand what you're asking.
If we all have the same scores, and there's like 12 people that have 47, or, no, I can't even get that, 33 points each, okay? And there's 12 of them. What are we gonna do? How do we move from there? Because what I'm afraid of is, it's going to get into that very subjective area of, "Well, we know this person, this person's working for us already, let's just pick that person." Or, I don't know, I don't think I'm making myself...
No, I understand what you're saying.
You are.
Ms. DePree Bruno always has a good way of rephrasing to make it more understandable. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. So, I'm hoping that as you're going through your rubric, and you're reviewing your resumes, that you're coming up with your individual 3 to 5, there may be hopefully some overlap, where three or four of you are putting same people in that 3 to 5 category. So that will be the first way to eliminate individuals. And then frankly, the board's just gonna have to have a discussion. You're gonna have to have an open and honest discussion about these candidates, and then choose, you know, I understand what Ms. Vaughn is saying, we don't want to just say automatically, "This person works here, this is who we want to hire," but the board has to have a discussion. This needs to be a board decision. And Mr. Cashman will be here to help facilitate that discussion.
Right. So, and, thank you, Ms. DePree Bruno, because there are seven of us, so virtually you could have 21 different people. So, at the end of the day, when this all gets back to Ms. DePree Bruno and Mr. Cashman, they will pull, what we've sent to them are 3 to 5. I may only have 3, you may have 5. You know, send those back to them, and then they will correlate that together, and then they will bring that back to the briefing. So that way, it's out there, we can have public comments, and it's all, that's why we're doing it in a briefing.
Yeah. Ms. Vaughn, and then Ms. Patrica?
I totally understand all of that. I'm talking about the last, last step. It could be that we say right now, "Everybody's first choice." And there might be seven different first choices. I mean, it's...
Yes.
It's fine, I'm the only one...
Yeah, so...
...concerned about this. I am concerned, I want it out there. And I thought that we want it to be transparent in how we're scoring, transparent in every step down to that last step. And that's gonna be the hardest step.
So Ms. Vaughn...
To discuss...
Go ahead, and then, I know...
That's all.
Ms. Vaughn, it's going to be transparent, because you're going to receive the resumes. The resumes sometime today will also be uploaded on the special webpage. I'm sure individuals will be sending you emails in terms of their thoughts. Over the weekend, you're going to be using this rubric, which is being discussed here in the open, in the public. And then at some point, once that scoring is done, it will come back to the board, again, open in the public during the briefing, for you guys to start weeding out the candidates. You're going to have to have an open discussion that will be very transparent, and finally end up making your choice on the dais, as to who you want to bring back for an interview. So it's gonna be very transparent and open.
Mrs. Patrica?
So do we have a deadline as a board when we need to get this information back to you? That's my first question, I have a second.
Yeah, it will be no later than 4:00 p.m. on Sunday, to me and Attorney DePree Bruno.
Thank you. And finally, is it an appropriate time to make a motion to adopt this?
It is.
I move that we...
Hold on, first I want to make sure, is that okay?
Well, we need, we, we can make a motion to adopt the rubric, as far as the resume rubric.
And can I share, because it came up, when you all see your top 3 to 5, it will be a transparent process. You will see who everyone voted for, their top choice, their second choice, third choice, fourth and fifth, if they go up to fifth, and the points associated with that. So I thought I'll turn it back.
Thank you. So, yes, Ms. Patrica, if you want to make a resume, if you want to make a motion on the interim superintendent resume rubric as amended, that would be great.
I move that the board adopt and use the interim superintendent search resume screening tool as amended and agreed upon by the board during this meeting.
A second. Give Ms. Gittens. Now, there's discussion. And, Ms. Patrica, I'm gonna start with you. Do you have anything, any comments?
No.
Ms. Fisher?
No.
Ms. Gittens?
No.
Ms. Vaughn?
No.
Ms. Morgan?
No.
I have none, so if you could, please record.
No.
Could you please record your vote? I think we're all up and ready to...
She gave discussion.
Done.
Ms. Roman, it's working, correct? It's not working? Okay, so, if I may, I'll just do a call. Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Nay.
Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
And aye. So the, this is a...
This is a formal vote.
This is a formal vote. So it carries 5 to 1. Okay. So, Mr. Cashman, so we know, you'll make sure that everybody gets this out?
Yeah, if I could just share the timeline that'll lead through.
Please.
Through this time would be, the applications were due by 9:00 a.m. today. All board members will receive the applicant's cover letter, resume, and the screening tool rubric, no later than 4:00 p.m. today. They'll also be posted to Board Docs. All board members should submit their resume screening tool to me and Attorney DePree Bruno, no later than this Sunday, May 23rd at 4:00 p.m. You'll have our email information. And as we discuss, the scoring will be reviewed and completed by the briefing on May 24th, so we, so the board can determine the top 3 to 5 candidates. Each of you should score, should show the scoring on each of your rubrics, and go through it to make sure you have a clear top 3 to 5 candidates, based on the scoring. And then we will make sure, for the briefing, we have a summary document showing everybody's top 3 to 5, including the points.
Perfect. Ms. Gittens?
Thank you for that, and will we receive that in an email as well? Have you already, or can you?
Disinformation?
What you just said.
Yes.
Okay, if you can send that to us. And then also, making sure that the document is editable. I think the one that we have on here, I guess it's just a sample, and we have to make sure, because we've received some documents that we couldn't manipulate and edit, so...
That's correct. This one, you would be able to put in the scoring. The one that I sent out, you would not be able to put in the scoring. So, we want you to receive your edits today. The one you'll receive later today, you will be able to put in your scoring, and it will total the score automatically.
Okay. Okay. And so, Mr. Cashman, so we're good until Monday, then? We've covered everything? Is that correct?
That is.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there was the one issue that Mr. Cashman was going to discuss, but then we kind of put that to the side, so we can move forward with this process, which was with regards to the group interview questions. And I believe that Ms. Gittens had made a comment that perhaps this can come up during board member comment, if she still wants to do that, we can do that, but I just, I didn't want the board to forget about that.
Thank you. Okay, so we will go ahead and start with board member comments, then. Ms. Javonelli? Ms. Javonelli?
I'd rather wait.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
The, something I'd like us to consider, that I've been thinking about quite a bit, is somehow memorializing interest-based bargaining in this process. Whether we decide to pass a policy requiring it here in the district, it is a big part of the culture here, is one of the things that distinguishes us significantly from other districts across the state. And it, I mean, as I talk to my colleagues, and they go into, they're constantly on the verge of impasse. And that is never the situation that we've had here. I believe Dr. Atkins really personified interest-based bargaining at its finest, and as he exits, I have significant concerns about that waning in the district. So, whether it be part of the interview process, or we as a board, I mean, I remember hearing all of us, I don't want to make any assumptions for anybody, but I remember hearing almost all of us comment on the interest-based bargaining process with regard to the MOU going into the reopening of schools, and how impressed we all were with how that worked. It's a big part of our culture, and I'm concerned in the hiring of a new superintendent, that that will be harmed or somehow decreased as we bring someone new in. So I just, I want to throw that out there for your consideration. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
I just want to thank Mr. Cashman for facilitating, and I look forward to Monday's meeting. Have a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
I'm glad that we worked on the resume screening tool. I will use it to the best of my ability, and I'm hopeful that my, that my concerns will not be, will not be borne out. And it's exciting to hear that we have had that many applicants. So I'm really looking forward to seeing all that talent that wants to come and help us for this interim time. And at our next meeting, I do want to, the speakers had a request, and I want to address that. I pledge not to change, for me personally, as a board member. member, I think we absolutely need to stay with what we said. This is interim, and I know there are ways that people can break contracts and do all of that, but I'm going, I'm going to pledge as an individual board member that I will be 101% against that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Ms. Morgan?
Well, I will piggyback that comment. I noted that I will stand by my vote to not allow the interim superintendent to be considered as a permanent. It has happened in the past, it's unprofessional, and it's not in the best practice manual for boards. I do want to apologize for not using the mic. I was flustered because, now I'm going to make a request of my colleagues. You all probably aren't aware that I cannot get what's up on that screen, on my screen. So it is, it is, I cannot get what's up on that screen, on my screen. So when you asked me to approve a thumbs up on the revised document, I don't have it on my computer. I'm going to ask, in the interest, as we move forward, and we have a lot of meetings, if we can resume the old seating at the table, that way I get my computer back, I have access to the same information you guys have, and, and so I'm just asking you to consider that. With respect to the comments about board meetings, Ms. Stillwell and I talked recently about finding a way to push out meeting notices, so that when a Board Docs, when documents are loaded in Board Docs, there's a way to send out those, the meeting notices, or some way to communicate with the public that there is a new meeting posted on Board Docs. And I know she was going to look into it, and I hope at some point, we will have the ability to do that, because I think it will address some concerns that people have about, we don't have to post some of our meetings until four days before we meet. So I think the public would benefit from that. And again, I do apologize for not using the mic earlier in the meeting. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Ms. Gittens saved the best for last.
Oh, okay, thank you. Couple of questions, and I agree with my colleagues about sticking with the, the not changing our minds about going global, and suddenly, as I would say, changing horses in the middle of the stream and saying, okay, no, let's do this and keep whoever is in there now. However, we did have the conversation with the attorney last time, and I specifically asked about the legality, if someone is sitting in the interim position, we cannot legally stop them from applying for the permanent position. So while I agree with you, we have the legal grounds that we cannot eliminate someone if they choose to do so. And it may get a little bit sticky. Can you please address that, and then I'll finish.
So they can apply, but the board makes the decision.
I agree with that, and I would just hope that respectfully, and just keeping with our word, that the board does not put more weight on someone who has had an extended opportunity to show what they can do. Because I'm sure, if any of the 30, when we get down to the three or five, if any of them had six months to nine months to sit here and show us how well they can operate and how well they get along with all of us, that's an advantage.
So I, in negotiating, I will reemphasize and reemphasize the board's decision that the individual not apply for the permanent superintendent position.
But I thought we said they, they can legally, they, we can't stop them.
It's going to be in the contract.
Okay.
The board did direct me to make sure that's in the contract.
Okay, so my, I think Ms. Morgan had a question.
I don't have a question. So it's absolutely clear. I will not vote for a candidate for the permanent superintendency who has served in the interim. It is a no vote.
Thank you.
Okay, and I'm a little confused, Mr. Cashman, the questions that we received this week that we, Ward Smith and, you know, we discussed with you about our suggestions. Those were the questions for the interim face-to-face, or?
I think she's referring to the group interview. Is that what you're referring to?
And I could speak to that briefly. There were two sets. One is for group, one for individual. We received feedback. One of the suggestions was that based on the approved categories, each of you, and we can go back and share some of the suggested questions, each of you would then pick your own individual questions. That would just have to be, and you would have to make sure you're asking the same questions of each candidate. This is specific to the individual, one-on-one. They would just need to be approved to make sure they're within legal parameters. And regarding the group one, based on that, but again, we can have that discussion at a, at a different time. It would be based on the approved categories. You know, we would, we would share some suggestions. That would be a longer dialogue in terms of, so if we, if we separated the group and just said the individual, we're going to ask each board member to come up with their own individual questions. We could provide those sample questions again. They would be submitted back to me and Attorney DePree Bruno, and just make sure they fit within legal parameters. And then you would ask each candidate the same question when you have your one-to-one. And we have a document you would use, because that would be public record, your notes and the questions you're asking. And so it would be a fully transparent process.
And so of the, the questions that we talked about, like I said, and a couple of suggestions as to different ways to ask something, you will share that with all of us?
That's correct.
With our different suggestions, correct?
Yeah, so we had the initial set of recommendations, and we also have some alternatives to those questions.
Right.
Based on the feedback. And then each of you, the recommendation would be each of you reviews those questions. Then you pick the individual questions you'd like, share those with me and Attorney DePree Bruno. We'll have a form, just to make sure it's within legal parameters. And then you would write your questions, take your notes, because it would be public. But you would all have those questions sent back to you for consideration.
So once we choose our questions, can we possibly see a master list of what each of us chose?
Attorney DePree Bruno?
Are is our questions that we're going to ask?
So we'll answer that question when, let me process that a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. I just, and I was just concerned, because some of the ways that the questions were written, and we discussed this, I thought it was, needed some, some work on it. And I would like to use the changes that I had suggested, so we can...
And Ms. Gittens, I know that Mr. Cashman will definitely work with us as the facilitator to hone in on those questions, because we want to definitely make sure that the questions are neutrally designed, so we're not asking Mr. Smith, you know, one way, and Ms. Whatever another way. So everybody has like the same questions when we do our, when we do our one.
And that's, that was my suggestion to him, was that...
And that's a great suggestion.
The, we have the initial one, and then I suggested a question in a different way. But we have all of that list, so we can kind of smorgasbord and choose from that. I feel comfortable asking this this way, and you feel another way.
Right, so that summary document, the initial one has been updated to include some suggested recommendations. So any that was, any were provided, we have those listed as alternative ways to ask the question.
Okay, all right. I think that that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Javonelli, I know you said you wanted to come back?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Can, thank you.
Okay, so just for me, I just want to bring this back up regarding the computer situation, the technology situation. I said some questions, you know, just regarding the crash. I feel like the timing, we want to be very transparent and open and honest in the time of the crash, with the computer system, because we need to pause.
Ms. Javonelli, we, we have information on that for you. Mr. DePree Bruno has some information.
So this is my understanding, this is my understanding, the website was down, the internet was up, and the emails were up. So with that consideration, we need clear direction from the board. Are we going to abide by the cutoff of 9:00 AM, or does the board want to do something else?
I'm sorry, did you say?
My question to that is, when was the internet, internet down?
The internet was not down. So my understanding from staff is that the internet and the emails were not down. What was down was our website.
Right, because the website had the information on it, of time, the time and line and everything.
This is the information that I have from staff. So the question now for the board is whether or not you want to adhere to the 9:00 AM deadline, or if you want to do something else. We need clear direction.
Well, I see some answers regarding when it was restored, you know, when it actually was down, and that kind of stuff. Look, you know, I mean, so, I mean, so the food was gone on Saturday, nobody got to see what was going on, you know, what was going on, what was required and everything of the application process.
I believe it was only down this morning.
Yeah, we have an email from that stating that, and that's at 7:30, oh goodness, 7:30 AM this morning, stating that the website is inaccessible at this time. We apologize for inconvenience. The vendor is working hard to restore access to website, and hopes that the technical issue will be resolved soon. That was, it's the lee schools.net district website is unavailable. And that was at 7:30 AM.
And another email was received at 10:35 AM indicating that the issue was resolved and the district website was back online.
Correct.
Okay, so then, then why would we, if that was down for just like three hours or whatever, then why would we extend it three hours? And I just want to be open and honest, and allow every applicant to be able to apply, and have the information all the way up to the time that we're at the shut-off.
So virtually, that would be from 7:30 to 9:00 AM, because they had to be in by 9:00 AM this morning.
Which was, which was what was advertised in the various...
During that time, that...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Somebody put that application in.
Can I?
Ms. Javonelli, Ms. Gittens has a comment. Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, basically, I understand what she's saying. The internet was down. If it in some way impeded for those three hours, the, the question would be, from that 7:30 to 10:30, were there applications, I mean, 7:30 to 9:00, were there any applications that came in during that period?
Yes.
And how many?
Because remember, the internet was not down. The email was not down. There were emails and resumes that were received between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. The only thing that was down was the actual website.
No, I, I was, honestly, I could not get on anything. I was in my office at 9:00 with the tech and could not access anything at the time, so...
Ms. Roman, how many, how many resumes during that time period?
I'm just asking, if we can say there's two or one or whatever.
So is the question, how many resumes were received this morning, all the way until 9:00?
After 9:00.
After 9:00.
Between 9:00 and 8:00.
After 9:00, between 9:00 this morning and this time?
And 10:30.
And 10:30. Excuse me, point of order. I think the question was, how many did we receive between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM during the time that the website was down? That will indicate whether or not people were still able to send in their resumes and their couple of letters.
They didn't get through.
Ms. Javonelli, is that what you're asking?
That wasn't the question, no.
No, she's...
No, that wasn't the question, because the information wasn't accessible until when, and we don't have that information. And that just makes it an unfair process.
So it shut down at 7:30 AM this morning?
People have to...
So 7:30 to 10:30, it was, the website was down. So if any, if anybody was looking for, if you were, if somebody was going to go on our website at 7:30 this morning and send their resume in, in the, in the last two hours, is basically what would have taken place.
Up until 9:00.
That they would not have gotten the information if they went on there at the very, very last minute today. At 7:30 AM.
People might have been waiting until the very last minute, but, or didn't see the information at all, and, or, you know, it's, so I think, it's the whole thing about the information was not accessible.
It's my understanding that there were two resumes received after 9:00.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
Does Ms. Javonelli want to make a motion, or is there some action that you're requesting by the board on this?
I would, I would say to accept the two applications, but, but, you know, I can't do that from...
Right, but we, we hear you. Ms. Vaughn?
I would like to make a motion that we stick to our 9:00 AM deadline.
Second.
Okay, so a motion was made, now there's discussion? Ms. Gittens?
Yes, I, I believe that because we had technical difficulties, and there were two that came in during the time that we had technical difficulties. We are not, we don't know if they came in at 7:30, or if they came in at 5:00 minutes to 9:00. I'm assuming, hearing from some people, well, why did they wait till the last minute? That's not our question. Our question is, we had an ad out there that said until 9:00. If we were down at 9:00, and they tried, they attempted, then we should accept those two. And I think it's not fair if we don't. That's all.
Ms. Patrica?
The information I've received is that if they sent an email at any point during the application process, the email went through. The, the website was down. This job information was available in various different places for people to find out that the application process was taking place. I personally don't think that it's appropriate to consider someone for the chief, the chief position in a $2 billion corporation that can't get their application in in time.
Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I, I just think that that's not a fair comment to make to people. Anything, you know, could have happened, like I said, if you did it at 7:30. I was on my computer, I don't know what they're saying, because the little button at the bottom, where it said internet access was red, it was down. And I was sitting in my office at that time. So I, I just don't see what the issue would be to allow those two people the opportunity to have their resumes included.
And I am, I would not want to accept them, because we do have, we did have a deadline on this. The internet was up. I had been here all morning. I've been able to be on my, my computer, as well as Ms. Vaughn had worked with staff to make sure that this was advertised thoroughly throughout pretty much the United States. So it's been out there. So to me, they had every opportunity to submit their resume and their cover letter to us in a timely fashion.
Excuse me, hold, hold on, hold on. Excuse me, Ms. Jenner, hold on one second, please. Are there any other discussion from the board?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, when I was in my off, when I was in my office this morning, my, I went on to my email and I was paused. So I had to click on that and sign back in. So, but I don't know how that would be affecting someone sending an email from the outside. And the deadline was 9:00 AM, so I support that we keep that.
Ms. Javonelli? Ms. Giovinelli?
My instinct is the information which would have the email to ask, have sent it, and I'm sorry, I keep giving this echo, it's very difficult to do this.
You're fine.
They weren't able to really see the email, where to send it to, then how does that work? How does that look? As a transparent process, how does that look? And it's only two resumes. And it could have been somebody on Sunday said, hey, to their friend, did you see the opening at Lee County School District for Superintendent? Send your resume, go on their website and look. Well, they go on the website and it's not there, so they keep looking and keep looking. And they can't do it because there's no email address or information accessible to them during that time. And by the time they finally get the information, it's after the nine o'clock cutoff.
I mean, I'm just telling you, that's the scenario and how it looks. I need to know if some people can look through the same glass as I do.
Ms. Morgan?
So I think everybody's offered their opinion. I think now we have to have public comment because it's in the motion.
If everyone is finished with their comments, we will now turn to public comments. And I think, and Mr. Prey Bruno, do you need to address that or?
No, we can move forward, Ms. Jenner?
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Wait, let's make sure you're on, you're on, Ms. Jenner. Is the computer?
I don't think I have.
Yep, there you are, okay.
Can we restart that because it started before I was sure that it was going? You guys are talking about submitting information at the last minute. The fact of the matter is, they had until nine o'clock. That's timely, even if they did it between 7:30 and 9:00. It's not last minute. It's within the prescribed timeline. And as we've heard from the different board members, some people have been able to have access to their emails, others have not. As Ms. Giovinelli clearly stated, if somebody got last information, last minute information on the availability of the position even being up, they would not be able to see what the position entailed. If they wanted to confirm and clarify what the email was that they were to send things to on the district, at the district, they would not have been able to have done that. And as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, you know, if I were those people, I'd pull my resume anyway because it sounds like a rinky-dink organization. They could put up a notice saying, hey, our internet is down, but not bother putting in there something that would allow those people to know when they can come back. If these people are truly qualified, I'm not talking the two that actually applied shortly after the original cutoff. But if I were sitting there trying to submit a document and I couldn't get on the internet and I was truly qualified to be superintendent, I probably have a job that keeps me busy and I can't be sitting there constantly going and refreshing the website to see whether or not I can get an email access in order to be able to upload and be able to get information on, to the website to apply for the position. It, it seems absurd to me that you guys are using this term, last minute application. It's not last minute. It's timely, as long as it's done by 9:00. And you deprive who knows how many people, an hour and a half time period, and they may not have the luxury of sitting there constantly trying to refresh your website to see whether or not it's now functioning. So I think that you guys need to revisit this significantly because two people did, yes, continue attempting to upload and finally succeeded in doing so. But what about those individuals who have employment? And they can't just sit there constantly refreshing in order to confirm the email or to double check what's going on. And personally, I also have an objection to the fact that you guys have created the matrices after the fact. And then those people that may be in the district that have had an opportunity to talk with you about what those matrices might include, they have the advantage of including that information, had the advantage, I should say, of including that information in their application, in their resume, in their cover letter that other people didn't have because it wasn't available. And I personally want to see everybody's comments on every one of the individuals that are applying because I want to know if there's anybody that you're disengaging from on purpose as a group.
Thank you.
Hello again. I just have one thing to say. We would be having an entirely different conversation right now had Ms. Jordan chosen, chosen to call on Ms. Gittens who had her hand raised first, instead of Ms. Vaughn first, we'd be having a different conversation right now. Rather than us all having to speak our opinions about why we don't agree with what you, with what the majority is agreeing with here, we would instead, the majority would have to be defending their case as to why this, why this should be completely the opposite. So I'm not sure why we always call on Ms. Gittens last, and I'm not even in her district. So like, I mean, I have no dog in the fight here. I just think it's kind of rude. And if we're going to be discussing all, if we're going to be discussing candidates, all of that information should be given to the public, all of that information, not just the top three to five. We should be able to see every single resume. We should be able to see every single scoring rubric thing. We should be able to see all of those. You know, we do not trust you. We need transparency and transparency doesn't mean, well, we're going to show them everything except. There is no except. Everything is everything.
Thank you.
Denise Nystrom. When I was an assistant superintendent for personnel, there was best practice and protocol, whether you were hiring a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, a principal, there was just best practice. It doesn't make any sense to me that there isn't best practice just being facilitated in this process. Every resume should be looked at by each one of you independently and you should be putting like a check mark for yes, or an X for no, or a check minus for maybe. And then you compare the pool and you look for 15, 20 candidates. And you do a brief interview with each one of them so that you can bring forward the best eight or 10 that you absolutely interview. And then you narrow it down from there and decide. This is not rocket science. Everybody should be asking the same questions. The rubric can be more detailed. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And by the way, your chief officer for human resources, if they're worth anything, they should be able to tell you what a good process looks like. Because the one thing that I will give you is that it is not within your repertoire of thinking, but it should certainly be within her repertoire of thinking.
Corey died, so we'll backtrack real fast. We were in board member comments, right? Giovinelli had the floor. The idea of a motion to accept those two people went up. She said she couldn't do it because she's on a phone call. Ms. Gittens says, I'll put the motion forward. And Ms. Jordan, you called on Vaughn to just cut in and put a counter motion against what Giovinelli. You should have called point of order, Depre Bruno. You know you should have called it and said that that was wrong. You know it. We'll also go back to, that's the pot calling the kettle black. Patrica wants to sit up and talk about, oh, well, these people should have had their thing, this, that and the other. You guys can barely get an agenda on a website. The same form that he was just had up there, this is what was on your website or handed out today because you didn't have a website, doesn't look anything like the form that he had up there with the ratings and the scoring and everything else. All of it. So I sent you a note saying, where is that that you're showing up there that you guys are voting on and talking about that the public didn't have access to? So you want to sit up there and point fingers about this, that and the other while you guys are guilty for the same BS. Same exact thing. The main website that Ms. Gittens decided to build, that was the center for all of the information about the superintendent and qualifications and what we want, what we're looking for and everything else, was on your website. Your website. Don't say, oh, because, you know, it was on Wink, you know, they should have known. No, I should go, if I want to apply, the Superintendent Lee County School District, I should go to their website and look at that information. It doesn't meet the need to say, oh, well, we had it on the New York Times Magazine. It's your own website. You want to talk so much about professionalism, Ms. Patrica, and that's what you sat up there and said.
Thank you, is there any other comments?
Mark Lesbey. I'm not real sure how we got to this point. I wish that we were having an entirely different conversation right now. It's a shame that we can sit out here and feel the lack of trust. The rubric, I think that was something that probably should have been discussed before this process started. As far as the candidates are concerned, I do believe that the resumes should be public. Search results should be public. I would even go so far as to say that the top three or five should be interviewed publicly. If there's a way we can have a school board meeting with your top three to five candidates, open that to the public so we can see how they respond to the questions that you guys actually feel are important to you as a board and to the school district in general. So that's all I have to say as far as the search is concerned. I do have a, one question about the code of conduct. I understand that this is going to be.
Ms. Sir, excuse me, I'm so sorry. This public comment is very specific to the motion that's pending on the floor. And the motion that is pending on the floor at this time is to, is whether or not the board will adhere to the 9:00 a.m. deadline for applicants. That's the only thing we can talk about.
I'm new to this, I apologize. I would be in favor of accepting the final two applications. I had an opportunity once to have a job offer given to me that literally changed my life. And obviously changed the life of my family. And that was one of those things that just fell in my lap at the last second. And quite honestly, if I hadn't just happened to come across it, I would have never had the opportunity to apply for it. So I would definitely be in favor of accepting those last two. As far as the motions are concerned, Ms. Gittens' motion should have taken precedence over Ms. Vaughn's.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we will go ahead and call the votes. So.
I have, I have something.
Oh, go ahead, please.
I'm trying to even get on the website right now and I can't even get on it. And I'm wondering where it says, I can't even get on there and even look at this, if it said the deadline actually on the website. And so, and I'm talking about Ms. Gittens' interim superintendent dashboard. I can't even get on that, as of speak. And it's 12:07 your time, so.
It's, Ms. Giovinelli, it's up. We're looking at it.
Okay, well, on this end, but.
Madam Chair.
Tell me where, tell me where it says it closed at nine o'clock on that.
Ms. Gittens, are you, do you have?
I'm looking it up right now.
Ms. Gittens is looking it up.
It says job close date, Friday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Did you hear, Ms. Gittens? Thank you.
Did you say Friday?
It does say Friday, May 21st at 9:00 a.m.
Yes.
Okay, well, today's not Friday.
Yes.
Today is Friday. It's still Friday. It is Friday, yes.
Jet lag, right?
At this time, Ms. Jordan, you had called for the vote.
Okay.
We need to be withdrawing Ms. Vaughn's motion and institute.
Excuse me, you're out of the order, please.
Point of order.
Okay, so at this time, we need to have decorum in the chambers, please. So folks, 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 let's, let's, hold, hold, Madam Chair, if I may, if I may.
Please.
Okay, so we want you to participate. We want to hear what you have to say. But we need to do it in a way that allows the board to do their job. So the chair is the chair. She calls and she finds the person who has the floor at the time. She made that call, that is in her prerogative. I need you guys to please cooperate so we can go through this process. We don't want to curtail your free speech and we want to hear what you have to say, but we need to cooperate so the board can do their job. So if you could please, there is a specific time for public comment. We would adhere to that. But when there is, when it is not the public comment time, we would ask that you please observe the decorum in the chambers. Now, at this time, Madam Chair, if you want to call for the vote.
Okay, I'm going to please allow Ms. Gittens to, go ahead, real quick, please.
And thank you for that. And we can appreciate your comments. The bottom line to the vote is going to be whichever one was first, the votes are going to be what they're going to be. So that's, if it went the other way, it would still, some are for and some are against. That's what I'm trying to get you to understand, okay?
Thank you.
And thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens. Okay, if I, if I may, call for the votes. Those in favor of Ms.
Can you repeat the?
Yes, I am going to have, Ms. Vaughn, please repeat your motion.
I move that we, I'm trying to remember the exact words. I move that we stick with the 9:00 a.m. deadline for submitting cover letter and resume.
As advertised.
As advertised.
Thank you. All in favor, are we able to go on? Oh, this is a hand vote, correct? Ms. Patrica? Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Nay.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Morgan?
Nay.
And I will say aye. So, motion carries. Four to two.
I just have a question before we adjourn for Mr. Cashman. Can, can we add to that agenda for Monday, a discussion of those questions?
Yeah.
If that would be okay for the board?
Yes.
A little unclear as to where we stand on that right now. And I do, we do need to start to use those questions immediately following that briefing meeting.
And we will have a briefing for that. Ms.
Actually.
Gittens, and then I'll go to Ms. Gittens, I'm going to go call you, please.
You don't have to.
I am calling you.
Anyway, okay, in response.
I know you like to go last, that's why I usually call you last, but please go first.
That's okay. Ms. Patrica, may I ask her about her comment? The question I have is about the questions. I know I gave some suggestions. And my question is, were everyone's suggestions used as suggested questions? Or was it combined and, you know, come to one? In other words, did, were some people's suggestions thrown out for others? Because we have not had that discussion, which kind of goes with what she's saying. But in the end, I still believe that if I have a question written in a way that I think is palatable and it's on the list and you and the attorney say that it's legal, I should be able to ask it in the way that I would like to ask it, that I feel is clear. And some of the ways that the questions were written, I think, would be confusing to applicants, which is why I made the suggestions I did.
And so just, if I could just answer your question, we have a summary, and we could provide that again. We have the summary of the initial questions provided. And in addition to that summary includes any alternative suggestions you had. So if there was question one and you provided an additional way we could phrase that sentence, that alternative was listed in addition to the original question.
And it can be chosen when we get to do that part.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then Ms. Vaughn, real quick, please.
So there's an updated list that we haven't gotten yet?
So we have an update, we have a summary list that we will share in terms of, yeah, the initial questions and then some additional suggested, and your suggested questions.
Okay, so can we get that mailed to us, the updated one that you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that would be helpful, thank you.
And I think that Ms. Gittens had already asked that so earlier, so we would definitely get that out. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, I'm on the website right now. And it says, deadline to apply, date and time, 21 May 2021, all day. I don't see 9:00 a.m. on here.
It's on the link.
Yeah, it's still linked.
On the calendar, under interim superintendent search.
Yes.
If I may, just in clarity, when we were putting the rubric together, we do have the job posting that did say job close date Friday, May 21, 2021, at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, and that's, I know Ms. Gittens had pulled that up, and, um, that's what she was speaking on earlier. Ms. Fisher, is there any other?
Well, I'm just saying what it says on here, that's all. Clearly says all day on this website.
On the calendar?
Can I see?
Calendar. Go, please. Go ahead, Ms. Chivinelli.
So, I'm sorry, so that's my concern, see, all day, how does that say 9:00? So how does that work for an applicant? How is that a fair process?
On, on the information that, and Ms. Gittens just stepped out, so, um, on the information that they had put out there informing of the procedure, it had on there the date and time on the website. I'm not sure where, where Ms. Fisher's at.
I went, I went into interim superintendent search, and then I clicked on the calendar. It says deadline to apply, 21 May, 2021, all day. So that, that's a concern to me.
Chair, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So when you do go on the website under the leadership, and you do go under the superintendent search, and you click on the interim superintendent search page, it does say, May 21st, all day, deadline to apply.
So that definitely, I, I mean, I can definitely see that, that's an issue, because you have two different, two different, uh, information. One has one thing and one has the other thing. So the bullet points, the important dates has one where it states something, and then it does not have the, um, the other information by it. Ms. Vaughn?
So I, I made the initial motion, and I was on the, the winning side, but with this new information, um, I think we have to, have to keep it open. That's an absolute mistake here, but it's our mistake, so.
I agree.
Is that the easiest way to do, do it, Mr. Prey Bruno, that I?
Withdraw?
I mean, we've already voted, what's the easiest way to do that?
You were on the winning side, motion to reconsider.
So I can change my vote?
Yes. Well, do, do the motion to reconsider, and, um, do, what, what is, just so I have an idea to be able to guide the board, what do you want to do? You want to keep it open to a certain time? Do you want to accept the two that applied after 9:00? What is it that the board would like to do?
Okay, it says, alright, uh, then I, since it's our mistake on here, in this one spot, um, we need to give everybody the benefit of the doubt on it. So I, I, I move to rescind. I'm not sure what, what you want me to do.
And the motion, she has to rescind.
To rescind my, my motion and my vote, or just rescind?
Just, what I would like to know is, does the board want to, to keep it open until 5:00 PM? Does the board want to just accept the two applicants? What does the board want to do?
Any that come, my motion is gonna say, any that come through the end of our workday. Any that we receive.
Which would be 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's say 5:00.
So then let's do it this way, let's do a motion to rescind first, vote on that, and then do the motion to extend the time.
I'm, I'm moving to rescind the prior motion.
Thank you, can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
We need discussion.
Oh, any discussion?
I know you want to skip that piece, right?
Well, I mean, it's there.
I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing. Okay, my, my point is, instead of 5:00, I believe that our, our administrative staff leaves at 4:30. And so to give them time to do anything, or if they have to get them to us, I would think we should say, you know, 4:30.
Well, can we take one bite size at a time? Let's do the rescission of the prior vote, and then come back in terms of the time.
Okay.
So any discussion on the motion to rescind?
Can we please take a vote then? All in favor to rescind the vote? Ms. Patrica?
Nay.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
I'm gonna give you a label.
Now, at this time, Madam Chair, you can entertain another motion.
Okay, so now maybe we have another motion.
I make a motion that we keep the application process open until 4:30 on May 21st, and then receive any applications coming in there.
Based on the website?
Based on the website.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Fisher, any discussion?
So I, I have a, a discussion.
Okay.
So if you're keeping it till 4:30, for staff to be able to upload any other resumes that come in, process it, provide it to you, upload it onto the system, it's gonna go past their, their hours of operation. So they need some time.
Well, if we want to say all day, so all day, legally, we can say whatever all day means.
Right.
So we can say 4:00 for all day. Is that fine with Ms. Roman?
Four, 4:30 works for me.
Okay, well, if we say 4:00, as long as that's legally done.
And I would like, I, I would also like to hear the staff that will be working, the IT staff that has to upload this information onto the website, what their parameters are as well, just to make sure that we can accommodate them.
Thank you, Ms. Stillwell, can you answer that?
I will try now, I will try again.
Thank you.
And for 4:00.
Ms. Morgan? You had something to say? I said, she's checking to see what time, because IT has to put these out on the website, so we have to know that they can put this out there. Uh, Ms. Morgan?
I was gonna make a motion to amend, but I will wait until I have the information to make the motion to amend the time.
Ms., go ahead, Ms. Vaughn.
Yeah, can I, while we're waiting, um, somehow, we have to do a better job of, and, and this, this was one of my worries, not, not that I'm saying we shouldn't have the website, we should, but it is a lot of work to keep the pages, to keep that page up to date. So I think maybe at our briefing, can we add something to?
I'm, I'm gonna ask the audience to please, again, be respectful. The board needs to be able to do their job, and they can't concentrate if they're hearing the mumblings in the background, so just, just, just let them finish their job, please.
So it is, um, it is a difficult task to keep this one particular page totally up to date without any, without any errors. So, um, I'd like to entertain the idea of adding, or maybe I just would bring it up for good of the order at the briefing meeting, what kind of additional oversight that we, we need to have to make sure that this page always stays up to date and proofread for, for errors.
Ms., thank you, Ms. Gittens.
Okay, I was waiting to bring up the next step for the page until after we, um, actually got our consultant for the rest of it. In the meantime, I, and I was going to bring up to everybody, again, what we would put on after this interim piece, can, and how, I will talk with them, Laura, to see how we can put on all the applications and all the information that they're talking about. And if you go back to the Polk County, which is what we kind of patterned after, they do have all this information, and, um, and I apologize that I didn't see that there was a difference in those two. And I, so, and going forward, as we, uh, do more with it, we can verify with the board, everybody can take a look before we post things up, just to make sure if you want to see it. And I'm sure that the communications staff is, um, is very capable and able to, to make sure that we are within our guidelines, so.
And it's, it's human error, so we, Ms. Fisher found it, we seen it, we're gonna correct it. So the only thing we're waiting on right now is to find out what time they need to make sure that we can get this out so the public can see. That is what we're holding on right now, because we know that our staff can get this out to us, but we need to make sure that, once we have it, within a very timely fashion, it needs to go out to the public. So that is what we're waiting for.
For, for the sake, oh, may I speak? For the sake of time, can we at least agree that we will follow the motion with a time that will be made certain by communications that fits with staff?
Madam Chair, at this point, I want to form a motion from the board with a formal time to make sure that we are transparent, and the public understands, and any other candidates that are out there also understand what the time period is. And also, maybe we have a five-minute recess?
Uh, yes, we'll have a five-minute recess, hold on to that motion, and then as soon as she comes back in, we will finish it up. Back from our break, Ms. Fisher, we're back?
Yes.
And Ms. Morgan, I am gonna go, um, before you, I call on you, Ms. Stillwell, can you, um, please let us know what you have found out?
We'll be able to link to board docs from the district's website, and board docs should be able to put all of the resumes in, because they were gonna be backup material anyway for Monday's meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Morgan, if you will.
Do we have a time?
The time was 4:30?
I haven't heard.
Oh, go ahead.
We would just stay until it's done.
Well, then there's no need to, I withdraw, I, did I make a motion? I can't even remember. Maybe you will need to amend.
We, we need a motion.
No, we had a motion, we voted on it to go to 4:30. I was gonna amend the motion to take it back to a time earlier. Now Ms. Stillwell is saying they will do it on an overtime basis.
Correct, okay. So we, we took the motion for that, so, and the vote? Discussion, and then we have to open it back to public comments.
I can hear you.
So, okay, Ms. Gittens, please restate your motion.
Okay, I believe my motion is basically that we extend the time to receive applications as advertised, since there was a discrepancy, and until 4:00. Is that all right?
Okay, you have heard, Ms., do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. And now conversation, Ms. Patrica?
I believe 4:00 is far more arbitrary than 9:00 AM. 9:00 AM was advertised everywhere, everybody had full notice, it was very transparent. I will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher?
4:00 is not all day, so.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher? No comments?
No comment, no discussion.
Ms. Morgan?
I have no discuss, I have no comment.
Thank you. Ms. Vaughn? No further comments. Ms. Gittens?
No further comments.
Okay, CNN, we'll open it back to the, oh, we'll open it back to the public. They have comments now. Mr., go ahead, sir.
It's not on.
I can hear you, but your mic's not on. So we'll start you, but we'll start you.
Did you hear that?
No, you have to speak in the mic and we will make sure you get your minutes.
Is it on?
They're taking care of it for you, sir. There you go. I just heard that. I heard tapping.
No, that was me.
That was you? Was that tapping your mic? It was not you.
Ms. Fisher.
Turn it on? Sherry, can you, can you see if you can help him, please? There, now I hear it.
All right, now it's green.
All right, there you go.
Are we live or is it Memorex? Showed my age. Well, thank you for reconsidering. And as far as the timeframe is concerned, I think it's probably far more important to accept all applications and to pay whatever overtime is required on the IT side. That would not be a concern in mind. The bigger concern would be making sure that all qualified applicants have the opportunity to get their resumes submitted.
Thank you.
Tara Jenner, a couple of quick comments. One, when there's conflicting information that's out there, it is appropriate to give the greatest timeframe and leniency to those that are on the receiving end rather than the least. And as a law student graduate, Ms. Patrica, you should know that. Also, throwing Ms. Gittens under the bus and blaming her portion of the website was completely inappropriate, given the fact that the calendar should be coordinating with her, not necessarily the other way around. The third thing I'd like to note is, you guys, we have video of Ms. Patrica, Ms. Jordan, and Ms. Fisher talking together privately during that recess outside of the sunshine laws. Thank you.
Corey Dye, I'll be short. I want to commend you, Ms. Fisher, for, you know, accepting or you saw that there was a mistake. And Ms. Vaughn, for you also acknowledging that the controversies and what you guys saw. So I'll just commend all of you that wanted to at least admit new information. Let's revisit this and I'll keep it that short.
Denise Nystrom, I'm not really sure why whoever checks these resumes can't do it in the morning. They're going to know if they came in today during the day, so I'm not sure why a time even needs to be set.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? CNN, I will call for the votes. Ms. Morgan?
Aye.
Ms. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Gittens?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
Ms. Patrica?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to one. Thank you, ladies. Next scheduled meetings, oh goodness, did I go through, I didn't even go through board member comments.
Don't even ask.
Okay, board member comments?
Make a motion that we skip board member comments.
If you have no comments, just don't say it. Ms. Chivinelli?
Actually already done.
Yes, we actually did. Okay, I thought, I was like, did we do this or not? Oh, goodness.
Chivinelli just said she.
Ms. Chivinelli, go ahead, I'm hearing you. We are hearing you.
Okay, thank you. My concern is it shouldn't be us and Gittens to have quality control. So we do have staff over there, so I don't understand why staff is not double checking, somebody needs to be double checking. I mean, just keeping that staff, have this happen, it would be, it's going to, the permit supervision. So, and I would still have to have it, that's for that process. So my concern is we should. Is that better?
Oh, yes, 100%.
It isn't really for me, but I'll try real hard. So, because it echoes in my ears, so I apologize. We just need to have quality control and we are in an education system and if we can't educate the public correctly, then it's bad on us and we're the ones that need to take ownership. And so we need to fix it and make it right. So for the future process of this permit superintendent, I would recommend that we have to have a better process.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chivinelli. And that's something that Ms. Gittens already spoke about, so we will definitely be looking at that. And again, it's human errors. People make mistakes, we found it, we're correcting it, and that's what it's all about, making sure that you do see, you know, things that happen and that you can make that correction and do what's right. So that's what we're doing right now. So going forward, but thank you for your comments, Ms. Chivinelli. On the next scheduled meetings of the board will be on Monday, May 24th, there will be a board briefing at 9:00 AM. We have a workshop at 1:00 PM. And on Tuesday, May 25th, there will be a board briefing at 1:00 PM and an action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no further business to come before this board and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.